Good evening. My name is Jim Reese and I'd like to call to order the regular Planning Commission meeting for May 18th, 2022. The time is 5:37. I'd like to ask for a roll call, please.
Ah, yes. Are we ready for a roll call? Thank you so much, Chair. Ava, did you want me to go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Here.
Commissioner, I'm so sorry. Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Raskin?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landras?
Here.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Here.
And Chair Reese?
I am here.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to ask for the Planning Director's announcement or Director's report, please.
Yes, good evening, Commission, and welcome, Commissioner Tolkien. I wasn't at the last meeting, so I want to take the opportunity to welcome you to the Commission and very speak for everyone to say we look forward to working with you. So just a few things that I wanted to update the Commission on. At the last City Council meeting, the Council extended the Santa Monica Outdoors program through the summer. So this is the program that we've been working on during COVID where you see the more outdoor dining, more sidewalk dining, the parklets, some of the parking lots that have been activated with outdoor dining. So those will all continue through the summer. And in the meantime, we'll be working on more of a permanent ordinance that we will take back to City Council to get final approval for that program going forward. So, you know, it was something that was out of necessity because of COVID, but I think it's really activated a lot of spaces in the city and residents seem to like it for the most part. So we will be looking at how to extend those programs. That same night, we actually had two appeals scheduled. One was the Carlethorpe appeal that's been on the council schedule for many months. Both of the appeals ended up getting continued because there were only so many council members there. So the applicants and the defendants had the option to continue. So those will be heard later this summer. And then coming up at the next council meeting next week is the budget. So thank you to the Commission for your letter on the budget. Those comments were forwarded to the City Council, so they will receive that. That's part of their deliberation. And then, you know, beyond that, really, most of the focus will be on the housing element, housing element discussion for the Planning Commission on June 1st. And then we are looking at either June 14th or June 21st for a council discussion. And at that meeting, same as the one with the Planning Commission on June 1st, we will want to kind of set the outside parameters of the housing element. We need that in order to have a complete description for the environmental review. So that's the main goal is to get that stat so we could at least have that piece of the process moving. I think that's it for me for updates and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do we have questions for the Director? Commissioner Fresco?
Where's my slide?
I thought you might ask that. It's been a very busy couple of days and Jing is actually out. Daughter's not feeling well, so I will attribute it to that.
Right. Well, I might have to call in and ask questions if I didn't get all.
Okay, no problem. Happy to answer.
Any other questioners? I think no questions. We're going to move on to the next agenda. Thank you, Director Martin. I would like to announce tonight's public participation rules. We are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for the phone number to call once the caller queue is open for each item. The caller queue will open when the item is introduced and will close after the fifth public speaker has spoken. Again, once we open it, we will allow at least five public speakers to speak before it is closed, and the number will be at the top of the agenda. Written comments received up until noon today have been read by the Commissioners. Comments received after 12:00 PM will be considered part of the record proceedings, but will not be posted online with the Planning Commission agenda nor the meeting. Another announcement is the moderator chat function on BlueJeans is for technical help only. If you have a problem, staff will respond to you. You cannot communicate with the Commission through the chat. We cannot see those comments, so please do not try to do that. Only use it for technical support. I'd ask at this point if any Commissioners have any announcements? Not seeing any. I was going to announce that we got that budget letter in, but Mr. Martin's already highlighted that for us. So I'm going to move on. We do not have an agenda item number two, number three, four, or five, so we'll go right to six and 6A. This is 13DEV-004 Development Agreement, 18ENT-0385 Environmental Impact Report, 20ENT-0303 Local Postal Program Land Use Plan Amendment for 101 Santa Monica Boulevard and 129 Santa Monica Boulevard, 1327 Ocean and 133 Ocean Avenue, and 133, I'm sorry, 1337 Ocean Avenue. At this point, I would like to announce that the caller queue is open. And again, there's a number at the top of the agenda, and we urge you to call in and get in line right now. After that, I would turn to ex parte disclosures from my fellow Commissioners who would like to start.
Chair, for TAs, there are no ex parte disclosures, so anything would be voluntary at this point.
Would you like to volunteer anything?
Sure. I met with the applicant on May 17th, and I've been by the site. But just, I'm happy to show that we had an extensive discussion about the project and circulation issues and other issues. And yeah, that was yesterday. That was yesterday with the applicant.
Anybody? Commissioner Lambert?
Did you say expensive or extensive meeting? Sorry. I met with the applicant team on May 9th in their offices and discussed, most of what we discussed was the housing component of the project. Then I've had numerous conversations with their attorney, Paula Larmour, in the past few days. And I've read all the public correspondence, and I know the site.
Mr. Fresco?
I met with the applicant at their offices and looked at their models in real life and also at the buildings in real life on Monday. As you might expect, I was asking a lot of questions about the historic preservation components of the project. I have been emailing with Paula Larmour and staff about some of the things I was interested in about the project, which I'll share with you later in our discussion in more detail. And just for the record, I was on Limarks Commission when, excuse me, the Spanish Revival building on the property was designated.
Commissioner Tolkien, I saw you next, potentially?
Yes. I talked to Frank Eri yesterday about the, called me about the project. But, you know, we just discussed it briefly.
Okay. Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, just for the record, I met with the applicant team on Monday.
Any other disclosure?
Yeah, I'll just jump in and say I also spoke with Paula Larmour on a number of occasions. Forgot to mention that.
I will, I would like to disclose that I have not spoken to the applicant team at all during this, but I would highlight that a decade ago, M. David Paul was a client of mine. I had never met Mr. Worth. He was not involved with the project that I worked on. And I feel that I can be very objective. 10 years later, I have had no relationship with the company. Anybody else have anything before we move on? Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
I did not meet with any of the development team.
Great. With that, I would like to ask staff to do their presentation.
Thank you, Commissioners. Rox Santana-Mori, I'll be sharing my screen in just a moment. Bear with me. All right. Can everybody see that opening slide with the palm trees?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you to the Commission and to the applicant team. On behalf of city staff and the entire interdepartmental team, I am pleased to be presenting this project for the Commission's thoughtful consideration and recommendations to counsel. This project, the Ocean Avenue project, is subject to a development agreement. And as I'll go forward through the presentation, talk to you a little bit about the course that this project has gone on in terms of, in terms of everything that has gone into what's before you. We do have, I do have an approach that's a little bit of a high level. This is a lot of details in this project, so I hope you'll bear with me through this. But I'm going to give some background on the community issues, the policy foundation that really helped shape this project. I will go over a couple of the most important key aspects of the project. I'll leave some of that in-depth presentation of the project to the applicant team. They'll do that best. I will highlight the community benefits that have been negotiated, the general plan consistency analysis, the necessity for a 1992 land use, excuse me, local coastal program, land use plan amendment, and also highlight the sequel environmental review that was prepared for this project. At the end of this presentation, staff will be seeking a recommendation from this Commission. We have presented two resolutions of recommendation with regard to the local coastal plan amendment and also to propose recommending certification of the final EIR and approval of the development agreement. Before, just for folks who are watching this, perhaps out there, I want to go ahead and just do a quick overview on the project site. This is a view of where the Ocean Avenue Hotel project is located. It's on the west end, the west side, I should say, of our downtown, our downtown community plan. It straddles two different zoning districts, and it is importantly within the established large sites overlay zone that I'll talk a little bit more about in this presentation. Also, of course, located in the coastal zone. In terms of neighborhood context on this west side of the downtown, Ocean Avenue was a really unique and special, let's say, avenue or boulevard, both in the downtown and the city. Ocean Avenue in the 1300 and 1400 block where the project site's located really does have this, this really Santa Monica-esque mix of both architectural styles, areas of development, and of course, a mix of building heights. In this side of downtown, we see low-scale buildings all the way up to buildings ranging from 90 to 180 feet. The views along Palisades Park to the west really help frame the avenue. Also, an important part about Ocean Avenue is its historic character. In particular, the 1300 and 1400 block does have an amazing richness of historic resources, designated landmarks. We have our cultural land state that's designated, which is Palisades Park directly across the street. On the other side of the project site, we have Second Street and Santa Monica Boulevard. Again, there are the commercial buildings. There is some mixed-use residential further along on Second Street and a variety of building heights. Zeroing in into the project site itself, 11 parcels, approximately 82,500 square feet. The parcels are separated by First Court, runs roughly north-south. And there are three commercial buildings on the property, as noted on the slide. There's also a mixed-use commercial and residential building at the corner of Santa Monica Boulevard and Ocean Avenue. And there are also two surface parking lots. With respect to the two landmarks, this is an important feature of the existing site, and these buildings will be retained and preserved and adaptively reused into the cultural uses campus that we'll go over in a little bit. But this is some information, just highlighting these two designated resources. The Queen Anne Victorian style shown on the left really is a representation of the early residential development pattern that was occurring in Santa Monica and along Ocean Avenue at the turn of the century. The Spanish Colonial Revival Building at 1337 Ocean came along later, a couple of decades later, and that really was designated in part as it represented that transition to introducing commercial development along Ocean Avenue. And also, this building was originally a mixed-use building when it was developed. In terms of, as I noted, the policy framework for how staff and the applicant team both approached this project, the downtown community plan that was adopted in 2017 really lays that foundation for both the city review and the negotiation of the project. Can't be underscored how much the downtown community plan represented a really broad and in-depth community participation effort the city undertook at that time to help develop the vision and the development standards that would really help shape downtown. We have a couple of some of the key points. It's a long plan. It's a detailed plan, but really was looking for ways to support new investment and really expand the mix of uses that both residents and visitors would enjoy. And I think this project really speaks to that. Also, an emphasis on historic preservation, pedestrian-oriented design, outstanding architecture embedded in the downtown plan. There's also the framework for the three established large sites set forth in the DCP. That was identified three sites that could, due to their size and location, could provide significant community benefits, but subject to a rigorous review project and a development agreement. Standards that are called out specifically for this site is up to 130 feet in building height, a maximum of a 4.0 FAR, and then there's some minimum open space requirements, both at the ground level and at upper levels. The priority community benefits identified in the DCP for this project site, affordable housing, cultural institutions, and historic preservation. Now, in terms of the timeline, I mentioned this application was filed in 2013. This slide really does try to hit some of the major milestones in terms of the public review process filed in 2013. There was community meetings and ARV concept meeting all the way back in 2013. I remember working on it then when it was filed. The project was put on hold for adoption of the downtown community plan, and then really the applicant team went back and really took that guidance in the DCP and those development standards that came out of that process and redesigned the project, really built on the community feedback they had acquired up to that point as well. So in 2018, with the submittal of the project revised consistent with the DCP, there were, as you can see, a host of meetings. We did courtesy discussions. We did another community meeting, ARV landmarks, planning commission. We did a concept discussion. And then we did present this concept to the City Council where staff did receive formal direction and authorization to proceed with negotiations, to proceed with project review. Environmental review is conducted in 2019 and 2020. And then also, we have been working at an in-depth level on the project since then and happy to be presenting it here in May. So out of that downtown community plan, what I've identified here on this slide are some of the community priorities and land use objectives that shaped our city review and the negotiations. I've already highlighted some of these in my description, but just wanted to put those forward so you know how we approach the project. In particular, I think this expansion of access to art, culture, and community gathering places was something we spent a whole host of time. It really was the applicant's vision for this project, and staff worked with them closely on that. We also see this project in terms of increasing economic investment and revenue generation, really to help the city support the community's needs and services. As you know, our local economy still remains in that initial stage of recovery from the pandemic. I would say in particular, the last 18 months, we have been focused. This is a couple of the, the way we've broken down our review. We really were in earlier years looking at the project design, the design concept, the massing strategy, and looking conceptually at the treatment of historic resources. And then we also had the other arm of our review, looking closely at circulation, at public works, at utilities, at the proposed establishment of the pedestrian mall and a portion of First Court, the sustainability measures. So these were things we have been working on with the applicant team. In terms of the project itself, these are some of the stats on the project. They're all laid out in your staff report and in the plans. But this is a hotel, full-service hotel, commercial, retail, restaurant, and residential mixed-use project. Sort of the unique element that we don't often see in a mixed-use project is this proposed cultural uses campus, which we will go into in more detail in the presentation. The residential component is outlined on your slide. We'll talk a little bit more about the community benefit aspect of that residential component. In terms of the cultural uses campus, this is approximately 35,000 square feet. It does include new construction and new museum building. It does have publicly accessible buildings. It does have publicly accessible open space. And importantly, that cultural uses campus includes the preservation, the adaptive reuse, and the onsite repositioning of those two designated city landmarks. Also, parts of the project include a publicly accessible rooftop observation deck, which is located atop of the hotel building, which is oriented to the west and in more or less the center of the site. There's a variety of pedestrian amenities built into the site plan. And I'll show you later, there's also a vehicle access alternative exiting onto Second Street. There's three levels, three subterranean levels. There's parking and with all of the EV infrastructure that we look for in our project going forward, and also plenty of bicycle parking, both short and long term. Here's a little chart that just hits on a little bit more in fine green detail on the stats. The range of the building heights on the site ranges from 53 feet to 130 feet. And the different buildings and massing forms on the site, the approximate heights are listed there for you. Important to note that this project proposes a 2.95 FAR, whereby the DCP authorized up to a 4.0 through this DA process. Approximately 25% less floor area being proposed forward with this application. The application does meet all of the minimum open space requirements. As this project has gone through its iterative review, this process of revising based on DCP and community feedback, I would want to highlight that I think one of the largest improvements that came out of that work that the applicant and their design team did was really the breaking down of the massing around the residential components of this project. The further studying and articulation on the ground floor, how it all works with the with the public access and the Paseos. That has been evolving through the years, and I think what's before you really balances both the building heights with the open space at different levels and really creates a signature project that is before you. Treatment of historic resources already explained that there is going to be that adaptive reuse and that integration. This particular project takes, I would say, a creative approach. It takes sort of a reimagining of how these two landmarks from close to the turn of the century can really be integrated with new construction. I think this project is really creating a strong historic and contemporary presence along the avenue. We've looked carefully at the seven aspects of integrity being retained in compliance with the standards with the treatment of these buildings and then the integration into the cultural uses campus. Lots of information in your staff report and attachments. We wanted to highlight that preservation professionals have been working on the submittal and will continue to participate should this project be approved as it goes through design review at the landmarks commission. In terms of open space, publicly accessible open space at the rooftop level, I just wanted to show you a couple of diagrams here showing open space on the ground level in the upper right-hand corner, and then a variety of upper-level open spaces, including that publicly accessible deck in sort of the orange color. Also, the proposed pedestrian mall at the ground level on a portion of First Court, shown in yellow there on the upper right-hand corner, that would be subject to a separate council action, but that is integrated into the plan and helps improve connectivity between the residential component, the hotel, and also the cultural uses campus. And this is just another quick view at the ground-level seating and landscape plan. This is the Level 2 seating and landscape plan, again, also showing the publicly accessible deck at the top of the hotel, and also a rendering of a view from it. In terms of circulation, access, and parking, one of the big themes for this project was really to create an uninterrupted pedestrian environment for this project. The applicant team really brought forward that concept early on with the submittal by closing driveways, by creating this sort of uninterrupted, approximately 320-foot stretch on Santa Monica Boulevard, and really taking their project site along Ocean and creating a place where pedestrians do not have any potential conflict points with vehicles. That was one of the driving design principles, I think, that we have been paying special attention to through the process. The circulation plan as proposed does include a valet operation on Ocean Avenue for hotel guest first arrivals. Other visitors and residents would be using subterranean garage. Access to the subterranean levels is via First Court from Arizona Avenue, which would be sort of off-screen, off to your left. This diagram just shows a little bit of how cars would move around. The orange arrows show entrance into the subterranean for the project and then the exit onto Second Street. Green arrows just so folks are driving through First Court and then turning into the exit leading to Second Street. In terms of bicycle access, I know it was raised what might be going on in parallel to the project site along Ocean Avenue. I know mobility has indicated that the north-south bicycle facility options along Ocean Avenue will be studied through the city's community process, looking forward to bicycle action plan implementation and studying Ocean Avenue further. There's a variety of, I think there will be a variety of opportunities for that, and that is separate and apart from the project. And this is just a quick view. If anybody will have questions later, of the three subterranean levels. Sustainability was also a big, a big focus for the applicant team. Their mixture, their sustainability package is a mixture of both code-compliant features and also elements of sustainability that were negotiated above and beyond code due to the project being filed back in 2013. As our codes have thankfully evolved and gotten more stringent and seeking more achievement of sustainability, their project has moved along with that as well. And this is both a mixture of code and community benefit requirements, just so you could see everything together, how the applicant is proposing this for the project. The Ocean Avenue project includes a residential component. There are 100 residential rental units proposed for the project. This 100 units is inclusive of replacement of the existing nine units that are in that corner building that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation. The breakdown of those 100 units is shown on your slide. And I am sure that folks will have some questions about that, but I did want to highlight the breakdown, 64 market rate, 11 replacement rent-controlled units, and 25 deed-restricted affordable units with the distribution and affordability levels shown on your screen. Negotiated community benefits based on community outreach, council priorities, the land use policies set forth in the DCP and the LOSE. Really, as we go forward through the remainder of this presentation, and we talk about the monetary values and the value of community benefits, it's really important to consider not only those individually negotiated items, but really think about the project as a whole and the value of the project to the community. And we're going to have, we have some numbers in our staff report trying to assign monetary value. There's what's noted for fees and contributions at just over $6 million. And then just focusing on a couple of the, of the community benefits that have been monetized in the analysis. Just the construction of the cultural uses campus, which includes the cost of historic preservation since they're so closely integrated, and the construction of the publicly accessible roof deck, for instance. That is a value at over $45 million. Taken with the contribution and the fees, that's a community benefit value of just those items alone at over $50 million. And while some of the community benefits outlined in your staff report do not have monetary values assigned at this time, each of those elements was focused on and negotiated, and they do strengthen the overall community benefit package that's included with the project. In terms of the first community benefit, the cultural uses campus, that's described in a lot of detail in your staff report. We are, the obligation is to construct, operate, and maintain a cultural uses campus for the life of the project. We have set a minimum square footage size. The cultural uses campus would need to have cultural facilities uses, and that's defined in the DA, to really keep it focused on, on community-serving activities and uses within the campus. The cultural uses campus is designed to attract and exhibit works of significant local, international, established and emerging artists, including architects. Exhibitions will be open to the public a minimum of six days a week. There, there is a lot of that detail that's spelled out in the, in the draft DA regarding this. Wanted to highlight some of them. And the campus would showcase exclusive pieces from the archives of Frank Gehry for a minimum of 15 years. Part of the community benefit with the cultural uses campus is their discounted rates for students and youth. There will be a free Santa Monica Residence Day. There will be annual field trip opportunities with transportation provided free of charge to Santa Monica Public Schools and nonprofit organizations serving youth. There is also a requirement that we did spend a lot of time working with the applicant on, and we think that this is an important component, and that is the requirement to implement an education and community programming plan that would be designed to provide high-quality opportunities for youth education, for higher education students to conduct research, and just engagement with the broader community through programs and events and educational opportunities. This commitment to construct and operate a world-class cultural uses campus really is an extraordinary community benefit. It expands Santa Monica's art and cultural offerings in a way that's truly meaningful, and that's been part of the excitement of this negotiation, but also some of the hard work in making sure we get this right. This cultural uses campus, along with the project as a whole, we believe will really support the city's economic vitality for a number of years to come. And really, the cultural uses campus, the provision of it in this project really responds to a community interest that the city, you know, doesn't have the ability to fund or operate at this time. In terms of the residential housing and the specific community benefit component, five deed-restricted affordable units for moderate-income households have been negotiated with those five units on top of the 20% requirement per the DCP. This brings the total, the total to 25% deed-restricted affordable units in the project. I just want to note that these moderate-income units, based on the regulations for replacing units and the rules for displaced tenants, these, these units may be occupied and offered for a displaced tenant. And the deed restriction for moderate-income households would only apply and would apply if and when the unit is not occupied by a displaced tenant. Preservation, I've already spoken about this. This is the community benefit. Again, just noting that integration of the scope of work and the cost, bare minimum $43 million, direct, hard cost not escalated. And we do have a performance bond requirement built into the DA to ensure that work is completed if the project commences. And we have built in review of our preservation plan and landmarks commission review for not only the treatment of the two landmarks, but also the physical area around the cultural campus. Another community benefit that the applicant and the city both agreed was important is the acknowledgement that Gehry Partners will continue to serve as the lead design architect for the Ocean Avenue project, including the cultural uses campus, through the issuance of the project's certificate of occupancy. Gehry Partners, as, as folks know, has extensive experience and expertise in designing world-renowned museums, and this, this knowledge, this depth of experience will really be invaluable to achieving, you know, the highest-quality design for both the cultural uses campus and the whole project. This bar just wants to float around with me. Already touched on sustainability. What's shown on your slide here is the actual, what was negotiated above and beyond code. And so these items were actually achieved through the negotiation. The applicant in particular brought forward one new item here at the end of this list, which includes a commitment to contract with the Clean Power Alliance for electrical service and that's 100% green power tier. For all time that that level of service is offered by the utility provider. This is electricity that's sourced entirely from wind, solar, and geothermal sources. The applicant recently proposed that, and we were happy to incorporate that into the package. These are the stats on the community benefits regarding publicly accessible open space and that rooftop observation deck. We're talking about minimum sizes of these areas. There's also a proposal to charge the $1 entry fee with net proceeds going to the Santa Monica Ed Foundation. And non-escalated direct costs for the construction of the deck would be approximately $2 million. For folks on the commission who have seen a couple of DAs we've, I've presented in the last two years, we have continued to refine our local hiring and our internship program requirements to really sync up with where the community need and interest is. What's outlined on your slide is, is familiar and has been in the last two development agreements. This one does put forward the language that we have negotiated that is most current. The internship program, there is a requirement to provide two paid internships through the hotel. Outreach and notification as broadly as possible is required and specified in the DA as well as the good faith effort guidance on hiring. In terms of impact fees and monetary contributions, all of the development impact fees that would be assessed for this project were escalated 8.5% through the negotiation. The fees are outlined on your, on your slide here. There is also, through the negotiation, a contribution of $250,000 for an economic equity and/or clean and safe downtown Santa Monica fund contribution. The stipulations for how this money could be used is outlined on your slide and subject to a community process related to economic equity initiatives and also to clean and safe downtown Santa Monica initiatives. Council would likely weigh in on the use of such funds. We're happy to put that forward for community priorities. Total impact fee contribution and contributions total over $6 million. As part of your staff report, and I know that we do have Paul Silverman from HRNA who is joining us, along with Alex Stokes, his colleague, part of the team, and they are on this call, and I'm going to let them answer your questions. But I did want to highlight for you that we did do a fiscal and economic impact analysis for the project. HRNA performed a peer review of the applicant's financial feasibility analysis. This is really information to help decision-makers, staff, and the community get a snapshot, a better picture of how the project would create fiscal impacts to the city and generate economic investment as well. And the HR analysis is contained in your staff report. The economic impacts are provided here on your slide in terms of construction jobs and net new permanent jobs and net annual economic output as analyzed and put forward by HRNA. Fiscal impact analysis based on a first-year stabilized operations would be $6.2 million or $3.44 million net new dollars as a positive impact to the city's general fund. HRNA's peer review of the applicant's financial feasibility analysis was done. Financial feasibility analyses are really just a tool for decision-makers to gain more information about the project and proposal and the value overall. One, one thing to note is HRNA's analysis presented an alternative scenario, an additional scenario that was entitled scenario two, and that was really focused on the ongoing operation of the cultural uses campus having a net neutral effect on that operating income. This was based on the assumption, looking at the applicant potentially securing a source of funding for annual operating costs for the cultural uses campus instead of, as they have committed to, if necessary, providing a full subsidy for the cost, which would be offset by other revenue derived from the project, you know, the other commercial uses. Under the scenario where the operation of the cultural uses campus would be net neutral, Under the scenario where the operation of the cultural uses campus would be net neutral, investment return would increase from approximately 7.7% to 12%. However, in this scenario, investment return would still remain below the industry accepted profit margin threshold identified in the staff report of 13 to 15% for a development of this type. This project was reviewed pursuant to CEQA. Although this project does qualify for a CEQA exemption pursuant to section 1.15182. In order to, to, to raise awareness, promote and form decision making, full environmental impact report was prepared. This next couple of slides will tell you a little bit about the milestones in terms of timing. We met all of our legal requirements, and in fact, we did extend the public review of the draft EIR for a total of 90 days. To give folks some extra time to review the documentation back in the summer of 2020. In the EIR, a number of environmental issue areas was studied, were studied. Those issue areas are listed on the slide, just to give folks at home a view of what's in that EIR. What sections were actually analyzed for the project itself. The final EIR did identify two significant unavoidable impact issue areas. Construction-related groundborne vibration that could affect the adjacent landmark, the Gussing Moran House to the north of the project site. Although impacts could be mitigated because it, it can't be said with assurance that the adjacent property owner would allow mitigation to be implemented on property. We have to take the conservative route and say that could be significant and unavoidable. There are also neighborhood traffic effects, excuse me, neighborhood traffic effects related to transportation using the LOS threshold, which was still in place when the notice of preparation was circulated for this EIR. A number of alternatives were studied for the project. In addition to the no project alternative, alternative three, which is a reduced height at 84 feet and thereby reduced FAR, was identified as the environmentally superior alternative. However, it would not reduce, it would reduce but not eliminate all significant unavoidable impacts compared to the project. Staff received seven comment letters on the draft EIR related to concerns about effects on historic resources, the transportation analysis, adequacy of the EIR, and also some general support. And the final EIR was published earlier this month. And includes responses to the, to comments as well as other minor corrections to the draft EIR. One thing to note in terms of clarification for the final EIR, prior to council's consideration of this document, staff would recommend a minor revision, clarifying that the city's 2018 draft LUP has not yet been certified by the California Coastal Commission. And accordingly, we would want to make sure to specify that project implementation would require an LUP amendment for the 1992 plan as part of the land use and regulations requirements. Your staff report contains detailed analysis of how this project is consistent with the general plan and the downtown community plan. And that's in your report. If you have any questions, you're welcome. Ask me about that. We hope we've laid out and made the case for you in written form. In terms of the local coastal plan, land use amendment, the, the proposed amendment is outlined in your staff report again for consistency with an amendment to the 1992 plan for consistency with the 2017 DCP and the 2010 loose in terms of development parameters applicable to the site. Important to note that this proposed LUP amendment is only, would only be in effect going forward through Coastal Commission if a project, if this project is developed pursuant to the development agreement and only for up to the 130 feet and the 2.95 FAR and not the 4.0 that's proposed in the DCP. In terms of community comments, this slide summarizes what's in your packet, what's been presented to you via email primarily. I did field some phone calls with some questions, folks wanting to understand more about the, the timing of this project in particular, since they said they've heard about it for a while and just wondering where we are in the process. And questions and concerns are outlined on your slide, and obviously, support is provided here for you as well. I will not go through what's on the slide there in your packet, but suffice it to say, folks are interested in this project with questions concerned and a large amount of support as well. Okay, now here comes the dry part. And other colleagues can feel free to jump in. Before we turn this over to recommending that planning commission discuss, ask staff questions. There were, through the course of discussion and review and public input and other questions, a number of revisions and clarifications and what we think are positive additives to what's been negotiated that the applicant has agreed to and staff has reviewed. And although this language may not be pinpoint final, I mean, we did want to highlight so everyone knows that we are looking at clarifying a number of terms. I have them all on slide, but this is respect to just clarifying how the applicant would increase EV charging infrastructure based on demand. And we can go back to this later during discussion, but I just wanted to show this to you. Also too, as well, the applicant has agreed to additional language specifying more terms around rehabilitation, around character defining features for the exterior. You know, may have some questions about this later, but I just wanted to sort of lay the groundwork for more discussion about these. The preservation related term. There is also interest in having a bicycle channel or to allow folks to walk their bicycle up from the subterranean level. I have actually seen one of these, and the applicant is amenable to that. And so we will be including language accordingly. Also some language to clarify regarding fences, walls, and hedges at the landmarks commission. The applicant agrees that no fences, walls, or hedges would be allowed. Or they seek approval for that in front of the landmarks along Ocean Avenue essentially. Also a clarification around the residential component that there would be no window, windowless bedrooms proposed and incorporated in this project. So we agree that this is good to codify, or excuse me, not codify, good to put in the development agreement. The applicant certainly agrees. And this is also a revision, a slight cleanup with respect to process and the relationship between ARB and design review. We can go back over this later, but wanted to show that to you on screen. And also with respect to that significant and unavoidable impact regarding groundborne vibrations in the adjacent Gussing Moran House. The applicant agrees regarding good faith efforts to secure that voluntary cooperation. This was the expectation of the applicant, but we just thought we should perhaps just detail that more. Although does not speak to any inadequacy of any mitigations at all. Wanting to amplify the role that the applicant would have in reaching out to the property owner. And with that, thank you so much for your time. Staff is recommending the council discuss, review, and make some recommendations to council in accordance with the two resolutions of recommendation we provided for you. Happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much for your detailed presentation, Roxanne. We appreciate it. And we do have a couple of questions for you, so we're going to start with Mr. Lambert.
Thank you. I will be brief. I, I just wanted to clarify for myself and anyone else needs it, the housing scenario here. Of the 100 units, 25 will be deed restricted as lower moderate income, correct? And that's 5% more than AHPP would normally require.
Correct, correct.
And then in addition to that, there would be 11 replacement rent controlled units. And, and those units would be offered to displaces who want to return at the rent they were paying, as adjusted by the general adjustment if they come back. And if all 16 of the rent controlled tenants decide they want to come back, five of them, if hopefully five of them qualify as moderate income, they will go into the moderate income deed restricted units, right?
Correct.
And if, even if they don't qualify as moderate income, they would still go into the five moderate income units. And then when they vacate, eligible moderate income people would go into those units. Do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay. It clears mud? I just wanted to make sure that I had it correct.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate the question. That is correct.
I think Commissioner Landers, you had your hand up next.
I did. Thank you, Roxanne, for that really comprehensive presentation. I appreciate it. I'd like to, I, I think there may be some mobility staff in the house. And what I'd like to do is make the observation, I've discussed this with the applicant actually, and I have some questions for staff. The, you know, there's been a slow transformation of Ocean Avenue over the last number of years, including through the recent approval of the Miramar DA, but also other developments coming in. And the city has also made substantial investments in the north-south bike lane on the, on the west side of Ocean Avenue. So given the profound transformation that will occur, you know, if this project is approved, what is staff looking at in terms of circulation on Ocean Avenue? And perhaps taking another look at the extensive cutout, curb cuts on the east side of the street relative to the slightly calmer north-south transit on the west side of the street? I see Peter.
Yes. Hi. Good evening, commissioners. That's a good question. There are, I guess, you know, it started, I guess, with the downtown. A discussion about the circulation. Ocean Ave was a consideration as part of that. And one of the concepts that came out of that effort is a people first or person capacity approach. And I think that does well in describing the kind of the outlook that the mobility division has or intends to employ when they're looking at the streets in the downtown and on Ocean Avenue. And so what that means is, you know, increasing the capacity for all users and managing the public right of way in a way that it's going to be efficient. And that is going to make a safe and encouraging environment for people to be able to park their car if they choose to drive, and then to be able to circulate through the downtown area by the means that they choose. And so maybe it's taking the train, riding the bus, walking, biking, or perhaps driving as well. And so that's the general approach. And one of the things that came out of that, one of those recommendations is to have the protected bikeway on the western side of the, of Ocean Avenue. And that was implemented over the pandemic and has been successful. And another is to, as you know, we know that there's a lot of competing interests in this area of the community, is to take a more longer term work and reach out to the community and find out what they would like to see with some more detail in how we can implement this vision that came out of the downtown community plan. So, you know, how, how can we better manage curb space? You know, given the way that technology's been changing? How can we create a better pedestrian environment? How can we encourage outdoor dining and activity on the street? And how can some of the future land uses as they turn over encourage more pedestrian activity? And so, you know, when we're dealing with those driveways on the eastern side of the, of Ocean Avenue, I mean, that is a case, you know, that is not terribly uncommon condition throughout the city of Santa Monica. You know, we have bike lanes where there's a lot of driveways, and there's a lot of traffic that's going in and out. So there's nothing particularly unique about that. Some of those, or many of those establishments have loading and get their freight from the alley side when it's available, and you know, that works well. Some of them have curb side loading to undertake those particular activities. So there's going to be some limits as development turns over to the extent that we can close those driveway aprons, you know, as the real estate changes and turns over. So, you know, that, that is a limiting factor. But, you know, as we reach out to the community, we'd like to find out more in the medium and long term about how we're going to implement these plans and then take the steps needed to implement that vision.
So, so that's going to require some sort of a study of Ocean Avenue, is that right?
Well, you know, depending upon what the community tells us, yes, I would, I would venture to guess that that is the case, yeah.
Well, even actually meaningfully engaging the community in a conversation.
Yeah, that would cry out.
Right? Okay. So, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back to a, to a question. But then in the EIR, and this may be a you question, Peter, or it might be a Roxanne question. There is a reference in, in NE1, which is Neighborhood Residual Impacts, with respect to some specific intersections where you say, or the EIR says, excuse me, there are no, it's significant, it's a significant impact, but there's no feasible mitigation. Wouldn't it be more accurate to say that we don't yet know what the feasible mitigation is? Because we need to do a bigger study of it. I, I recognize that that's not, that's not something that gets easy to write into an EIR. Like, there might be, we don't know yet. But would that be a more accurate sort of description of?
That's not, that's not easy to answer without knowing the specifics of what you're referring to.
NE1. So I'm, I'm literally referring to in the EIR, intersection LOS, let me give you a page number. It is page 54 of 1,212. And it's talked about however the proposed project would have resulted in significant unavoidable transportation impacts at four intersection years under the approval year and six intersections under the future year project conditions. And these, even though it's consistent with the DCP, that the expectation is like significant and unavoidable neighborhood effects. But it sounds like the city is, is committed at some level to trying to not only mitigate those effects, but also broadly improve pedestrian multimodal transportation in the area.
Right. I, I see that Rachel has joined us too, so she may have some specific answer. But in general, in general, I mean, we are trying to improve that environment in the ways that you're, you're explaining.
Okay.
Yes, if I may jump in, so the significant impact that you identified, Commissioner Landers, it has to do with the level of service. I think you're talking about another impact discussion, which is the conflicts with bicycle and pedestrians, which is a separate.
Asking about both, this to be fair. Yes, I recognize that I'm asking about both. Yeah, both.
So with regards to that, that, that was, that discussion was made and the analysis was made based on the assumption and the, or not assumption, but the, the recognition that the project would be reviewed by mobility and other city staff with assurance that would not result in significant impacts and effects because we do have a, a mobility staff that does look closely at things like that, which is why. And right, and right now, the, the project itself is not proposing any specific hazardous design conditions as to whether or not it supports mobility goals. And that, that is, that is definitely something that is being, that is, will be looked at, you know, when the plan does come to fruition.
Okay. And so I, I've tried to figure out how to phrase this, but I, I, I tried this on the Miramar and failed miserably. So I'm going to try again here. There's 2.255 million proposed to come in as a equivalent to a TIF fee. It's, we're calling it a TIF contribution because this is a DA. Without specifying a dollar amount, I would love for the planning, like, I would love to find language, and I want to make sure staff, my question is, would staff be open to this? I would like to find language to prioritize at least some of that money to get these studies, this study started. Because it is what you are, we're not just talking about housing. We're talking about housing, hotel, museum, right? This is going to really change the, the interest in this part of town. You know, would staff be? You know, would staff be open? And if so, we can come back in discussion to at least encouraging council to use some of that TIF money to to kickstart this Ocean Avenue community engagement and improvement study.
Yeah, that's something that we've talked about a little bit. And, you know, it's, and we appreciate you bringing this up and offering this as a suggestion and, you know, adding importance to some of the projects that we're looking forward to in the future. One of the challenges with doing that is that we're right now operating really in a resource-constrained type of mode. And a lot of the projects that we currently manage, when we're changing the public right-of-way with physical infrastructure, we're leveraging funds from different funding sources, namely the Department of Transportation. And when we do that, we're oftentimes, especially in this time when we are limited in our resources, when this happens, you know, we're oftentimes under the gun, so to speak, in order to meet those funding obligations and not jeopardize those funds we're leveraging with our with our funders. And so I would be fearful that in the good intention and kind of putting this forward as a recommendation that somehow we find ourselves in a position where that limits our ability to use the funds in the most efficient way in the future.
I hear you. I think that I think there's a way to frame it so that it doesn't box you in, but also respects that when we approve large projects, and I think this is a insistent conversation we've had in the city, large projects come in that have inevitable mobility implications in the near, you know, in the near vicinity. And then residents sort of say, hey, well, let's take some of the money that we're getting for this project and and use that money from this project to address the impact that the project is going to have. I think we need to find a way to say that. And so I thank you for the answer to the question. I'm going to bring this back up in discussion and hope that we can find language that we can send to council. Thank you. That's those are those are my questions for now.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Raskin.
Thank you. Preliminary, I saw floating around on social media that a few folks had questions about, you know, where people could find an itemized breakdown of the community benefits. And so am I correct in understanding that that information is on page twenty of the staff report? And then also at the end of the May twelfth HRNA letter and also in the development agreement itself?
I believe the EIR has an section.
I would. I would say the list of community benefits is contained in the draft development agreement in section 2.8 of the draft development agreement. That's attachment C to the staff report posted on our website. That would be the best place to look at what we're drafting. The HRNA analysis and the applicant's financial analysis presents, you know, a different take on negotiated community benefits from those two perspectives. But I would say the draft DA, section 2.8, is the place to look.
Got it. And then just following up on that, on page twenty of the staff report, the, I mean, it's a huge number, but the value of the cultural campus, looking at hard costs, was listed at about $43 million. And in the HRNA report, it was about $69 million. Just curious where that, that seems like a pretty significant jump to me, and I'm curious if someone could speak to that.
I will, for full disclosure, table two in the staff report is is a is a summary of the analysis that's in the HRNA reports. It's also looking at some of the information and some of the the numbers and the costs provided by the applicant that are more construction-driven. You are right. Thank you for posing the question. Why is that number lower and sort of the very conservative estimate that's in the table on page twenty? Part of that, without having to go through all the numbers, but I will say this, that will make some sense, is that in the way that the numbers were broken down, we did not, just from a staff perspective and trying to keep things a little isolated or clean in the analysis, is that we didn't take on, we didn't add in sort of the pro-rata share of the parking garage, for instance, which parking garage is, you know, there's, I'm using that as an example of something that's pretty costly that sort of spread out amongst the uses because it is a one-shared facility. So we just, we just took, we looked at the line items, the way HRNA broke them out, which was based on a lot of data from the applicant as well. And we did make some conservative judgments on what to include and to not include. There's still project costs, right? Especially related to this, still a project cost, there's still a cost to the applicant. How we assign a community benefit value to it, there is a little bit of judgment that we obviously do. We always say it's conservative. We want to have all the reports presented as well. But I do recall that was one pretty significant multi-million dollar item that we just didn't know how to allocate it, okay, for the preservation component, the cultural uses campus, there was sort of an allocation for the garage, for instance, and that we just chose to do that.
Got it. And then in terms of timing, and forgive me if I missed this in the DA, but impact fees, ones that are due upon issuance of the building permit, is the entire sum total of the impact fee due when the first building permit is sold?
Well, in a DA, we can structure the payment of that in a variety of ways. And we've done slightly different things, depending on what the project is. But yes, they would typically be paid with issuance of permit.
Got it. And just one more question. That's to do with the EIR. I'm a little curious why LOS was a significant unavoidable impact, given that we're in the post SB 743 world, where, you know, LOS is no longer supposed to be a significant impact. I understand that it was, it was, you know, analyzed against the city's internal significance thresholds at the time that the environmental assessment was done. But I I thought that we had changed those at some point to respond to SB 743.
Yes, similar to the last, similar to the last DA's before you, this project has been in progress for years and years. And when the when the draft ER came out, we actually hadn't adopted the VMT threshold yet. It came out in May and we adopted in June. Hence why LOS was used at the time, because that was what was in effect when the draft ER was released. However, that being said, we did anticipate that VMT vehicle miles traveled would be the new threshold. So there is a VMT analysis provided in the EIR as well for your information.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? Commissioner Raskin, can I ask a follow-up just to that point? Yeah, I apologize for not asking that earlier, but I'm, I don't understand why we're even referencing LOS. Doesn't that just confuse the public to Commissioner Raskin's point? Could we pull it from, could we add some clarifying language? This is, you know, that this is obsolete? Because I think it implies something that's not true.
Well, I believe that language is in the staff reports that states that this is based on the prior thresholds. But we could certainly, if if the wish of the commission is to add additional language prior to going to council of what the VMT analysis, we can certainly do that. We went with LOS because that was what was in effect at the time. But we could certainly add a sentence in there discussing what the VMT impacts, VMT impacts would be as well.
Yeah. And am I correct in understanding that that VMT impacts are presumed to be less than significant, given the project's size and location?
Correct.
Yeah, I I think we'll probably come back to that point in discussion, but that's all all the questions I have for now.
Great. Who's, what Commissioner wants to go next? Mr. Fontanari.
A little trouble.
I lost my mouse for a second. First of all, let me let me recap on LOS. You know, there's three problems with vehicle miles travel. First of all, it's very, very hard really measure vehicle miles travel, but you say.
For Fontanari, this is a discussion I think we're going to have later. So let's try to stick to questions right now, please.
Well, okay. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, the, we are, we're going to be using a lot of recycled water for this project. And the city has a finite amount of recycled water available, given the rain that falls on our city regularly and also the water that's basically purified to a level that can be recycled. What percentage of our recycled water will this project absorb?
This is Susan, and that's hard to say. We don't have our Water Resources Manager here. But the one thing that I think you need to think about is the process of completing construction of the Sustainable Wastewater Infrastructure Project, which is under the Civic Center parking lot and which will generate approximately 1.5 million gallons per day that ultimately will be injected into the groundwater system. But there there is potentially more supply than just what you believe now. So it's hard to give a percentage is what I'm saying, because we don't have those numbers here, because the Water Resources Manager is not here.
Okay. Well, I guess where I'm going with this is that these numbers are very critical to us, and it may turn out that we have less water than we think, particularly when we start reinjecting it into the groundwater, and then there's a certain loss that's going to happen in that re-injection process. And all of that water is recapturable. So I think we need to know this. This is not something that we can just, you know, we have the Miramar project coming on, we have Gelson's coming, we got 9,000 units coming. These are all things that are directly facing us. And so we need to know where we are as a city. We can't just keep adding and adding and adding.
Right. And just so you know, my understanding from the Water Resource Manager right now, because there are no direct connections to the between development and the Ocean Avenue recycled water, like the Purple Line, this would be a very good start, right? Because they are going to pay for the connection from the Ocean Avenue line to the project. Also, they are agreeing to comply with the Water Neutrality Ordinance. So I think, taken together, at least the project is as about water-efficient as it can get.
Yeah. Well, paying water for water that we don't have, all that money that's being collected, you know, it seems like about three quarters of the people are paying into a fund and only a quarter are actually meeting the targets. So I got to ask the obvious question is, where does this project put us in relation to our water neutrality goal, which is supposedly one year away by 2023? Where are we in that?
Right. So if you go online, you can access the Sustainable Water Master Plan. And I, you know, I believe this project, along with other projects, has been taken into account in making certain assumptions about the water supply. And Rachel, maybe you can speak more to that, because, you know, that's in the EIR.
Right. I mean, when this EIR was prepared, the Water Resources Department did take this project into consideration. They do, they do take a lot of our general plan forecasts into consideration. So this water demand has been accounted for. And when they look at their water demand, they look at over a five-year drought period, like severe droughts. So they look at different scenarios.
Okay. So same discussion goes vis-à-vis our power generating capacity. What percentage of our power, the power of this project needs, what percentage is generated locally? And what percentage is going to be bought from Edison and the Clean Power Alliance? What's the ratio?
I mean, I don't think we have that specific answer, but as with all development projects and all residential and commercial customers, all of these customers are automatically opted into the Clean Power Alliance, which is the 100% renewable energy. We can't predict which tenants are going to opt into the 100% renewable energy portfolio. So that's kind of a difficult question for us to answer.
Okay. If that's the case, if we don't really know, and again, the Clean Power Alliance is not an infinite resource. They have limitations to what can be provided from renewables. And so I got to ask the question, is this project going to be maxing out our available capacity to generate power in renewable ways? Where are we in that in the same power neutrality that we have water neutrality? It's always so vague, but we have to make some guesses. Where do you guess we are?
Well, as with, as Roxanne had mentioned, this project does include a number of sustainability features that will be required to comply with our city's green building ordinance and provide solar as well. And so all of that is incorporated into the project. I don't think this one project alone is going to cause the kind of electrical outages that you see. It's really more of a regional issue.
Okay. Is this building an all-electric building or a dual-fuel building?
Roxanne, do you happen to know that?
I have not been told that this is all-electric.
Okay.
Although I will say that I believe under our current green building ordinance, it has to be 100%. If it complies with our building code, which it has to, it will be required to be 100% electrical. Or if not, then it has to be 15% more energy efficient than our current energy code.
Okay. Is this building going to have openable windows?
I believe so.
Okay, and that's.
I'm sorry, did you ask another question?
No, that was my last question.
Okay.
Okay. I wasn't clear about that either. Thank you. Who's next? Any other questions? Seeing the hands, I'm going to take the opportunity to ask a few questions. Staff, you know, we have a great pedestrian environment here, kind of centered around a lot of retail running out on the streets. What, how do we react? Or what do we do if, you know, retail's not exactly doing great right now? Are we able to, or do we have anything in here that says, okay, if you don't have retail, you can't leave it vacant, you got to do something active?
We don't have a clause that stipulates a requirement for the retail or for the commercial spaces regarding compelling a different kind of use.
Is there anything that would stop them from doing something other than a straight retail use? They're in the zone that allows a variety of uses, but those uses will still be intact, even with the development agreement?
I'm going to look up a couple, couple of sections we we often, sometimes in the DA's, we stipulate uses or we defer to code, allow those uses to change over time with current codes in the future. Let me check on that.
Great, thank you. And then about the Cultural Center, I have a quick question. There was, there's a reference that Mr. Gary gets 15 years of exclusive pieces. And I didn't quite understand that term. It's not meaning that all the entire museum is going to be dedicated to his stuff for 15 years. It just means he has some exclusive pieces he's going to share with us, correct?
That's right. The development agreement is just a commitment to have pieces from the archive down for a minimum of 15 years. It's not intended to be. And I will certainly let the development team talk more about this, but it wasn't written, was not written to be an exclusive only. As as it's described in its mission to attract a variety of world-class emerging local, regional artists, including architects. So it was not written.
Okay, thank you. And that wouldn't, that makes sense that it wouldn't be, but I just wanted to make sure I was reading that term properly. Then getting to the issue that was talked about electrical, I think I read in here that it was an all-electrical building. So I would, it would be great if, I'm sure the development team can confirm that when they give their presentation. But I did see something else, that we're going to be trying to be 15% lower than 2019 rules. Do, assuming I read that properly, does anybody have an understanding of what the difference is between current or soon-to-be-adopted rules and 2019 rules? Is the 15% going to put us aware of the current code's heading, or is it still ahead? Is the 15% going to put us aware of the current code's heading or is it still ahead?
I will check on that.
Okay. Why doesn't the, well, let me move, move on. Am I going to LUP question? We want to cap the LUP change to this project's FAR. And I'm just curious why we want to do that. We have a DCP that still allows a 4.0. And I, you know, my sense is we want a project like this to go forward to the 2.9, but we don't know that this project will go forward. So why would we cap that in the future? Knowing that it has been years since we've gotten a coastal plan amended, why, why limit that?
You know, that is the language that we worked on applicant and staff. An applicant proposed the amendment. That was something that they were wanting to keep it narrow. So perhaps they may certainly respond to this in their presentation, but also too, to give decision makers and the community a sense of expectation of what this LUP amendment applies to the project. And also too, because there are other city efforts going on, albeit slowly at the moment, that really would be putting forward the 28, what we had drafted and council had adopted in 2018. We are needing to rework that, particularly in light of the housing element. I mean, what's going on there, we would want to check for consistency and any updates that would be necessary. But I think this is intended to be a project-specific LUP amendment, so we wanted to keep it narrow. Otherwise, at least from my perspective, raising the FAR would take it away from this project and more into the policy that's been established by DCP. And I think that's a different kind of, a different process. But I'm open to thoughts, but that's, that's, that's the way we approach the issue.
Okay, well, I'll see if there's any appetite to discuss that later, but it just seems to me that you should keep it with the DCP. Okay, then.
Oh, I just want to note on that also too, because the environmental document, we're just trying to keep the, keep everything lined up so that all of our analysis, you know, and information and disclosure through the EIR, everything's consistent and the 2.95 was studied. And so in terms of putting an application forward, we just wanted consistency on that front.
Yeah, and that could be the, the end of the discussion, that if somehow the, putting it back to four somehow changes the input impacts or the calculus of the EIR, we certainly don't want a recirculation. But I would like to, I would like to hear further from, I guess, staff and from the applicant team, if changing that up to 4.0 really hurts their project per se or their environmental. Next, I'm going to go to section 2.8.13 of the DA, and this is money going towards economic equity issues in downtown. And I found it interesting in the discussion on that, we spent a paragraph that talks about how we're going to try to create economic diversity in the downtown. And then the last sentence says, but if we can't do that, then we'll use this for cleanup of downtown. So what is the caveat of what, or what am I missing? And what's the trigger that this money moves from the economic equity to the cleanup? Because I think there's a vested interest in the property owner wanting to spend the money to make sure downtown's as clean as, as possible.
I will say that this, this contribution, the applicant frankly is the one that proposed it and the dollar amount to the city initially, or the concept of it, in keeping with what's been a priority and part of the broader discussion in Santa Monica and really intending to be responsive to that. For full disclosure, the Clean and Safe Downtown Santa Monica, that was a staff suggestion. And let me just explain why, just in light of, and no way to take away from the other initiatives, but in the event that there was, I know the language is written broadly, so perhaps there could be some crossover. But also too, it gives decision makers a little bit more flexibility in a time of limited resources to look at funds. This project is in the downtown. It gives some more options. If you have a recommend, if this commission recommends that the, that that language be stricken, I don't believe the applicant would have any concern about it. They were proposing it as, as originally.
Okay, it's, I'm getting, I'm getting the sense from a few head nods, we're going to be discussing this later. So let's, let's, let me go on.
And that's not, not, I think that's an easy, easy.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. Then my next question for you would be, why is the EIR not mentioned lead platinum?
I don't believe it was decided at the time that we, when we did the EIR, what it would be. And so that's why that was not mentioned in there, but I'm sure the applicant could speak to what level of lead certification they will be achieving.
Well, well, that's, that's an interesting response because I thought they were, they were committed to lead platinum at this point.
Well, at the time when the EIR was prepared, they were not, they weren't sure whether or not they could achieve that. So that's why it was not discussed.
Okay, but, but now my understanding is that they were committed to the lead platinum.
And certainly we can revise the EIR if, if that is the case. And if anything, it would help support the analysis in the EIR.
Yeah, maybe if there's, there's an amendment, you want to do an errata between here or whenever the proper term is between here and council, maybe that could be put in there. Well, I think my last question is, in the EIR, I was reading some discussion about signage as well. And it said that signs are for traffic safety and utilities. I did not see it talk about, and I guess I missed this, and I just want to confirm I missed it somewhere, but like, there has to be onsite signs for the restaurants and for the hotel and things like that. So I just want to make sure that we did not get missed.
Probably an oversight. Yeah, we will make sure we correct that in the errata.
Okay. Actually, I said that was my last question. I'm going to live by it. Any other commissioners have questions right now? Hearing, seeing none, I would like to ask the applicant team to please do their presentation. We're giving you 15 minutes. As much as you can stick to that, we would appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, members of Planning Commission and staff. My name is Jeff Worth with the applicant team. I'm going to quickly run through our presentation so you can hear from some other folks that I'm sure you'd rather hear from than me. Let's go to the next slide, please. We're going to share the screen. Thank you. So as you know, the site in blue is the project area. The family has owned this, majority of the sites is 1980. We purchased the balance of it in 2007, and that is when we first brought Gary Partners on board. We've been working with them for 15 years on this project. We are very proud of the project that we have put forth to you and the community. The program has been discussed a few times here, but to run through it quickly, we have 120 hotel rooms with a union labor force, 100 apartments, which we'll discuss later. The cultural campus, we've discussed and are open to continue to talk about, but as you know, includes the rehabilitation and activation of two design landmarks. Retail is on the ground floor. We have a public rooftop terrace, which is at the 130-foot height. So the tallest part of this project is public space. The average height of the entire project is 48 feet, 1 inches. About 60% of this project is either at 45 feet or lower. As was stated, the FAR is just under 3, 2.95 versus the 4.0 that was stated in the DCP. And we're building 285 subterranean parking spaces. Here's a little timeline, as has been discussed before, of the process for this project. We originally filed in 2013 after working on the project for six years. We stayed on hold while the DCP was processed. After hearing what the DCP called out for the site, we redesigned the project and refiled in 2018. This is a view of the project from the pier. In the top gives you a summary of the changes from the initial 2013 project to the project that was reapplied in 2018. Reduction in FAR, a significant reduction in height, similar number of hotel rooms and a removal of all condominiums and an increase in the number of apartments. A big part of the DCP request for the site was mobility and circulation. And what we accomplished here is we removed two curb cuts, one on Santa Monica Boulevard and one on Ocean Avenue that currently disrupt the pedestrian experience. So this project has a total of 815 feet of pedestrian safe area around the perimeter of the site. This is an image of the current Santa Monica Boulevard, looking back towards the promenade. The next image is what it'll look like with the new project. Next is our curb cut that currently exists on Ocean Avenue, which cuts through people walking back and forth across Ocean. The next image is the sale that gets created with the elimination of that curb cut. So there'll be no car traffic interrupting it. This is the alley coming out to Santa Monica Boulevard, again, crossing over the sidewalk that brings people from the promenade, Ocean Avenue and back and forth. And the next image is the Paseo that we've created by turning the alley and eliminating any vehicle traffic through this area. The housing, as mentioned, is 100 units, 25 feet restricted affordable, 11 rent-controlled and 64 market-rate units. We have included three-bedroom units, you know, intended for families that actually include private yards in the downtown on the second level of the project. And all current tenants of the project will be provided housing back in the new development. The cultural space, we've talked before about the existing landmark buildings. Robert Chattle is here to answer any questions about those. So I'll leave that for later because he's much more talented at responding to that than I would be. Staff already talked about the education requirements of the museum as well as the discounts and for Santa Monica residents and our contribution to provide transportation to and from for both schools, youth-serving nonprofit organizations, and we'll also include Santa Monica College students in the program for access to this facility at no charge. This is an image of the rooftop observation deck. This is where the 130 feet exists for the project. This is the only place it exists. It's open to the public, as stated before, with a, all profits from operating this facility will go to the Santa Monica Education Foundation. This page shows on the left, actual page right out of the DCP for our site. There's five characteristics that this DCP requested for our site. We meet all five of them. We stood by for those four years. Once this was adopted, we looked at it, we listened to it, and we changed this project to meet all the goals that it requested. We'll talk more, I'm sure, about sustainability. We are very proud of what we are offering to do here. And the answer is yes, we are committed to lead platinum. I think it just wasn't finalized while the EIR was drafted. Water neutrality has been discussed, 100% green power, solar infrastructure, the EV charging stations, with the commitment to expand if the demand is there above code. Transportation allowances to reduce trips to the site, marine debris reduction program, and drought tolerant landscape are all part of the sustainability features of this project. The economic benefits for this project are quite large. It's been discussed, there's a little over $6 million of contributions at issuance of permits. The museum alone will cost us over $40 million to construct. As you heard earlier, when you start allocating some of the parking towards that facility, the number grows closer to $70 million. There is going to be 1.3 million hours of union jobs to construct this project. And when it's finished, we'll have 615 permanent jobs at the project that we'll create. That includes our local higher initiatives and internship programs as well. These are figures for the contributions this project will make to the city. $5.6 million on an annual basis, almost $230 million over its initial 25 years. You can see the total economic impact is obviously an enormous figure. And finally, almost $30 million to the Santa Monica United School District over the first 30 years of operation. I want to thank staff for all the work. These projects are not easy to go through and process. And so I just wanted to note that. But now I'd like to turn our presentation over to Frank Carey.
It's a great honor to participate in this project. I've been a resident of Santa Monica since the early 60s, I believe. Barry Scott was the city manager, if anybody remembers that name. And I've been through many council meetings and planning meetings over the years, not for my own personal work, except the Santa Monica Place project a long time ago, which had complications. I don't want to go through that. This is a much more positive project for me architecturally. I remember a lot about the old city that I came to, if you want to call it the old city in the 60s. I'm pretty wedded to the city. The old house I lived in on 22nd Street was moved from Ocean Avenue in 1900, something, early 1900. So I've been part of this community for a long time. And I've seen some buildings built that I would have voted against had I been on your commission. But nevertheless, they're there and it is a texture. And I'm really interested in creating buildings that relate to an image of the city. I guess I have, I have an image of the city that is this scale that you're looking at here, the smaller scale, with more intimacy, more pedestrian access. Architecture that sort of fits, I think, with, with the history of the place. I'm not sure, I wouldn't be building buildings like this hotel exactly like that anywhere else, I don't think. We spent a lot of time on making sure all of these buildings have great views. The idea of having a museum that would show my work was, I vetoed it from the moment I heard it because I didn't want a vanity museum. And I'm against having that. I'm willing to have my work shown over time, but not be the central-ish game plan. The Getty has acquired my models from, from my bar mitzvah to Disney Hall, I call it. So there's, they've got a lot of stuff that they could probably show. I've saved everything. I build a lot of them. We have a warehouse full of them, but I really don't want this to be a vanity museum. I would, as long as I live, I would fight against that. So that's the deal I made. I think there's a lot of opportunity for, I think artists and architects are artists historically. So I consider artists, architects as one thing. And so there are a lot of artists working in Santa Monica, a lot of architects working in Santa Monica. We could even introduce architect, architects' work from other places as a member, as a possible education tool. But I really focused on the body language of the buildings, having a very, as much of a human, humanity to it. And the open spaces are accessible. We've just finished a project downtown LA across from Disney Hall, so much larger, but it has the same principles that I've brought here. And I think the public spaces are very important. are very important. Uh, maintaining the existing home, two houses, the historic houses were very important to me. The corner building is a work in progress. Uh, I kind of like its body language, but, uh, we wanted it to be a, a significant sculpture as well as a, uh, architectural, a usable space. I think it's getting there, so I propose to keep working at it. All of the windows are openable. Those windows in the hotel were, uh, a kind of a criticism of the hotel that's down the street, the new hotel, where the floor-to-ceiling windows are that, uh, when you pass by, you see everybody's, everything window through those windows. The idea of putting a little curb on it so somebody could sit at those windows in a chair and not feel exposed below their knees somehow, uh, and yet it'd be very open. The windows do open, so they become like balconies. What else do I have to say? That's all. That's it. You can yell at me later.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Do you have others who want to speak?
No, we're good for now. We're obviously available for, for questions.
Great. Commissioner, um, Commissioner Lambert.
Hi, I have a question for both of you. I was involved early on in the Grand Avenue project. Now, remember there were wavy walls that aren't there? I just wanted to make sure that the, the design that we're looking at, you know, the sort of curvy walls on the outside were eliminated in that project? And I lo- I love the ones that are there in the project before us tonight and wanted to make sure that they would remain in the project. Know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, let me speak to that only because I think the, uh, right, it's on the owner to, to, to be committed to the design that Frank brings. And maybe there were changes in that project and it could have been cost-related, but, uh, we've been working on this for fifteen years. This is the project subject to further refinements, for example, that you just mentioned, the corner. But you look at the hotel, for example, that's what we're going to build.
Okay, that's great. And then I, I have, I don't really have many questions because they've all been answered from much, but one, one question, I think I know the answer already, is that there's been some discussion recently about why this housing is not condominium. And I think I know the answer, and frankly, I would feel much less favorably for the project if it were condominiums. Um, but can you, can you share with us your thinking about going rental a hundred percent?
Yeah, I mean, you know, it was pretty clear from the community that they did not want condominiums in these color projects. Obviously, some people got some through recently that I can't speak for or how that happened, but we were, we were told the condos, uh, were not what folks wanted, and we eliminated them a long time ago, and we, we committed to that, uh, program change.
Great, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next, Commissioner, Commissioner Raskin.
Yeah, thank you very much for the, uh, presentation. Uh, I think it was Commissioner Fontanari who asked earlier if the windows in the project would open, and I just wanted to confirm if they will or will not.
Yes, we, we wonder if it will be operable.
I just said that. Is that it, Commissioner Raskin? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Fresco.
First of all, I just want to thank you for your beautiful design with incredible body language. Um, and, uh, since the two thousand eighteen, uh, version and this version, the corner building has evolved from a clear box to an amazing sculpture. And I was wondering what, if you had similar kinds of exciting ideas for the cultural use building, which currently seems like it's trying unnaturally hard to disappear behind the landmarks when I personally don't know that it has to. So I'm wondering if you have ideas burning inside of you for that?
No, I don't want to preempt the, the landmark buildings at all. And I think what that, uh, blue and gray behind is, uh, the gray part would be a tapestry. My office was just involved with the Eisenhower Memorial in Washington, and we created a tapestry out of stainless steel that turned out kind of beautiful. And, and we, we invented the technology, we own the IP on it, and, uh, we're planning to do something beautiful with that on this facade. I don't know what. We could have all of your pictures made in the tapestry. I know you don't want that, but, and I don't want my picture on the.
I, I did see, uh, many years ago when, uh, your house was up for landmark designation, I could see that tapestry in your studio, and it was really amazing, so, um.
It turned out.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen pictures of it in place, too. Um, I guess that's my only question for now. I, uh, do have a few questions. I, I'll wait until everybody else for, well, let me just.
Yeah, jump in and do it. Let's.
Yeah, let's just do it. Um, sorry, I have to reorganize the names so I can refer to them. Um, so basically, the building as it is now, which sounds like you're pretty attached to the cultural uses building and that it's relatively firm, is super different from the one that was in the schematic discovered, uh, studied by the EIR and is not the, is really different also from what was presented in earlier public review at the ARB and Landmarks Commission. And so what I wanted, what I'm curious about is, I mean, the reason I asked that question about if it, if it was, uh, if there were changes to that building that you were thinking of is because I'm, I'm a little concerned because there's been no review except for your internal Secretary of Interior's evaluation, and I know you have one of the best professionals in the field doing that, but in Santa Monica, it's a public process, and there are lots of people who weigh in on how those standards are interpreted. So I'm a little concerned in where the connection to the historic building is now, that it just touches a lot of it. And I know it's transparent and some people might love it, but where I'm going with this is that if there are changes to the back building that occurs, some new ideas come up, and there's a minimum square footage required in the code for it, and there's a five percent leeway for reducing square footage for design review. What I wanted to ask was if the part of the building, which is the lobby on the plans, uh, where it touches the landmark building facades for a big stretch, if that square footage, if there's a, uh, request to adjust that in design review, and there might not be, that that not count towards the five percent limit on square footage adjustment? I know that's like really small and specific, but I just always, my job, uh, here as I see it right now is to make sure that there's complete flexibility from the historic preservation standpoint while also leaving the door open for your complete flexibility.
I, yes, I think the, uh, you know, the cultural portion of this project actually will be under landmarks jurisdiction. So I think all that conversation, you know, will happen through that process, and obviously I know your history involvement with that commission, so I think that's a, that would be the time for us to kind of, you know, discuss how, any changes that we want to talk about.
Right, and I'm not, I don't want to discuss any changes. What I want to do is just give them a little bit more wiggle room relative to the part that touches the landmarks. That's what I'm asking for. I'm not asking for any changes. That's not what we're here for. I'm just making sure that the development agreement says, uh, oops, sorry, basically that a reduction in size of the cultural use lobby wouldn't count against design review confloor air floor constraints, uh, that the cultural use building is limited. I mean, do you see what I'm saying? So is that something that?
Yeah, can I just clarify? I think what you're saying, if we were to, for example, shrink the lobby between the two landmarks, that that wouldn't count towards reducing the square footage that we stated we're providing? Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Right, so basically, the reality is that that lobby is a thousand square feet, so if it's reduced a little, it would be by a few hundred feet. So I'm asking for five percent plus a few hundred feet.
We're fine with that.
It's small, but I think it would make a big difference in wiggle room.
Commissioner Fresco, can I ask a quick qualifying question? Is this a code? I mean, is this, it sounds like there's a code limit that says they can't change the square footage in the landmarks.
In the DA. No, no, it's in the DA. This is about the DA.
So really, what you're suggesting is that there needs to be flexibility so they can reduce that, so we need to write that into the DA?
Right.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was clear.
Right.
Probably if, if the applicant gets to build, has to build a little less square feet, they will probably not be terribly upset.
Well, that's for them to say.
Right, I said probably. Okay, so you haven't, go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I assure you that there would be sensitivity in designing that base and how it touches the historic buildings into not, in doing something bad to the historic buildings or that would be considered negative. I understand that.
Right, no, I think, I mean, everything I've seen so far is, I have no complaints. I'm in heaven. I mean, basically, I see this project as a hundred-year landmark that makes other landmarks that are hundred years today, two-hundred-year landmarks. So it's all good to me, but I just want to make sure we can make it to the finish line at this pace, and that's really what I'm worried about, which is, I realize it's a tiny worry, but you know, this is the time to say every little worry, so.
What other worry might you have?
I do have one other. Um, and my other is another thing that, um, I mentioned to Jeff, uh, when we met, and I also talked about it a little bit with Paula. Um, the idea, I know the EIR said that there was, uh, no, uh, danger or, uh, impact for vibrations on Palisades Park, you know, that the soil is solid, that it's a hundred feet away and all that stuff. But there were some maps, and I know it said that the state map, uh, overrides the map that I saw that is in the EIR that shows that this part, half of this parcel is in a vibration landslide zone for the park. And, uh, I know the city has done a ton of mitigations, and part of the reason they keep doing more mitigations is they don't always work, and they do a lot of stuff, they drain streams, they do, they put in pins, they put in more pins, they drain them a different way. I mean, this has been going on for a hundred years. So all I really want, so I can sleep at night while you do your construction and probably a lot of other people in the city, is a vibration monitor in Palisades Park so that if, God forbid, some weird Luke thing happens, some little alarm will go off and we'll know and we can stop it. How would you feel about that?
We, we're fine with that. I think we, um, have some language that we'll propose to staff and, um, but we understand the concept and we're agreeable to it.
Beautiful, thank you. And, uh, but the lobby thing, not so much.
We didn't say that either, right? I think, you know, we, we, we hear you just, we feel like we've been listening to a lot of people, and we, we're going to work on this, uh, and look at it.
Okay. Thank you very much, and thank you for the beautiful project.
Commissioner Landrus.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so first, I, I just really, again, wanted, I, I'm sure I'm, I'm echoing lots of people and, and expressing appreciation for the project. And, um, Mr. Gehry, I've, I've, I've been a fan since I first came, came, walked past Fred and Ginger in Prague. Um, so I know that goes back a ways. Uh, but, um, so I, I really primarily have question, and I want to say also that I appreciate the, I appreciate the evolution of the project. I think, I think this version is really, really strong. I remember the last version that came to float up that I watched, um, prior to my serving on the planning commission, but I really think this is the strongest iteration that you've seen. Um, I, I really have two quick questions for the, for the applicant. I'm following up, uh, Mr. Worth on our conversations yesterday. Um, the first one is, uh, would you be, you know, given the trans, the, the transformation of Ocean Avenue, um, would you expect to be an active and engaged participant in the city's revisioning of, of Ocean Avenue, um, as that community engagement process and improvement process goes forward?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, absolutely. I mean.
Great, okay.
Property we have there, for sure.
Because I think we'd want to count on your support for, for that, for that effort. Um, and then my second question goes to Commissioner, our Chair started the question about this paragraph about economic impact, and, um, and I'm not sure that this actually needs to be written into the DA, but I did want to ask you about it. In the hearing, you and I had talked yesterday about the wide variety of ways, um, that, that the campus as a whole could be engaged with, um, economic opportunity development uh, in Santa Monica, and particularly potentially taking advantage of the Community Kitchen Incubator that's going to be coming online, whether by, you know, sourcing from, from those producers, if they're able to meet your, your, your standards, or, uh, potentially hiring some of those folks directly into your, your operations. Is there anything you'd like to expand on, uh, in that regard? Because I think it fits into your local hiring program. We don't have to specify it here, but be helpful to hear.
Yeah, I mean, I think part of it is, is that evolves, right? Our connection with it's going to evolve as well. I mean, we, you brought up two good ideas originally of, of using them, the, the kitchen as a vendor, but then we, as we talked more about it, we said, wait a minute, we could actually hire folks from that kitchen into these restaurants. So I just think that's a perfect example of how, once things are up and operating, you just don't know where it's going to go. But I think there's a commitment to explore all the options that exist.
That's great. And then, um, in terms of this discuss, this proto discussion we started having about clean and safe, um, do you see a nexus in that economic? I mean, the, the only nexus I see is if any aspect of a Cleveland's clean and safe initiative were to involve hiring people, um, who are economically disadvantaged, but that's, it strikes me that it cannot be primarily for clean and safe purposes. It has to be for economic development and inclusion purposes. But just like to hear your thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, our commitment is that we're going to contribute that money, and I, you know, we look to the city to decide where it goes. We have no preference. Um, I mean, you know, it's, it was, it was drafted by us as economic activity, right? So that's where we thought it was going. So we leave it to you to decide if you want to be more specific about that. We're fine with that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for those questions. Uh, any other Commissioner questions? Mr. Fontanari.
Yeah, I, I've got some questions regarding, uh, sustainability, and, uh, it seems that you are going to be storing water on site. I assume it's rainwater you're storing. Uh, what is the capacity of your rainwater storage?
We haven't decided that yet? Yeah, I don't, at least not designed yet. We had, we have not, you know, over the course of a project of this length, there's certain things that we haven't finalized, and one of those is retaining the engineers to figure out the capacity that we can bring on site. So I don't have an answer for the quantity of, amount of gallons on. So I don't have an answer for the quantity of, amount of gallons of water that we can store.
Okay, then the other question that's related on the other side, which is electricity. It seems that you're going to be providing a lot of photovoltaics to, you know, choose a number, 500,000 kilowatts there? You know, it's watts that you have to provide. Is that been planned for in your roof plan, or are you going to put collectors on the side of the buildings? What's the strategic approach, if not the numbers?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. So what we, we retained an engineer there, and with roof area alone, we can get to 2 watts per square foot of footprint area. So the amount of kilowatts I have memorized.
125 kilowatts.
125 kilowatts is, it equates to 2 watts per square foot.
Okay, so, and then the last question is, you make a distinction in your EV charging situation where you have some spaces that are fully operational. You have some that are partially operational and some that you only have conduit for. Is that, is that an accurate description of that?
Yeah, the intention there is that what we proposed with staff is that we would monitor the usage of the EV charging. If we already have the conduit in place, it's much easier to expand and add more stalls to the EV charging program, once we see the demand for it.
And does your, you, you had an amendment to the DA that had quite a high number, which I think is good, up and above 50%, but do you have the transformer space capacity for that kind of an upgrade?
Yeah, no, we will. You know, before this meeting, I sat at 17th Street and Santa Monica Boulevard with my own Tesla. So we know where this is going, and we'll have the capacity to handle higher demand than what code requires. If the demand is there, we'll have the ability to do it.
And my last question is, have you considered any kind of storage, the way you're storing water, any kind of storage for your power in the form of battery, compressed air, choose your technology? But we are in that situation now where the capacity of storing is almost as valuable as the actual production of the power. We can produce the power, but we can't store it into the night, which is when we basically really need it, or in the afternoon anyway.
That's right. Yeah, I, I think the, what we really understand is what amount of space would make a meaningful impact and trade that off with the, you know, the required, the desire for underground parking, or, you know, there's a fair amount of museum space underground to reduce the height of that portion of the project. We move that building underground. Half of it is underground. So we'd have to really get a sense of how, what kind of space requirements would give us any kind of meaningful result for battery storage or other ideas like that, and we'll look into that.
Okay, thank you. That's it for the questions.
Commissioner Lambert?
I just have a follow-up question to Nina's question about the lobby. And I know what her thinking is, what her concerns are, and I know you guys want to be really sensitive to the two landmarks, so we're kind of all on the same page in that regard. And Nina, correct me if I'm wrong, but here's my, here's my read of the question that she posed to you, and that is that we would remove the 5% limit on floor area we could, whoever, landmarks could remove. The 5% does not go away? We still cannot adjust the floor area of the lobby by, by more than 5%?
No, the 5% applies to the whole, the whole, the whole project, actually, but but in terms of the cultural uses campus specifically, I didn't want any changes to the lobby to apply to the 5%.
I understand. So technically, so are you asking them, would it be okay to, worst case, remove the lobby altogether?
Well, I don't think that would fly, but in theory, if they did, that it would affect the 5%, but I don't think that would ever be asked.
All right, thank you. I just want some verification.
And that's more clear to Nina, too, so thank you for asking it. Any other commissioners before I jump in with Mike? Nobody? Okay, I have a question to staff, Mr. Worth, about retail and, and, you know, retail's in a tough place right now. And what are we going to do to activate those? How can, what can we do to activate those?
You're right, right? The last few years has been very challenging for the retail environment. I'll tell you, one of the ways you're going to be successful, just to be open with you, is to create a project like this. If we just continue to build regular plaster boxes, lot line to lot line, with no character, you're going to have challenge leasing those spaces. We created specifically at this project, we made sure the spaces didn't get too deep, so we avoid some of the issues you're, you're going to have on the 3rd Street forever, because those places are so large, it's really hard to bring a ride attendance into those. So we were mindful of that, but I also think that our feeling and our hope is, and our, you know, our leasing folks are, are telling us that we create a project like this, we're going to create outsized demand for the spaces that we have. So I think that's the best that we can do. You know, you brought up a point about, about vacant retail. I can promise you, that's not something that we're going to sit too long with, because that's a big component of this project, and the economics of this project is the ground force base.
Okay, good, I appreciate hearing that. And I also think, I read something, and maybe it was your economic states study, that said that, once they added in Mr. Gary's design, high-quality design, and even countering for maybe some increased cost, the project was slightly more profitable, because as I read it, the retail was more, would be more successful because of his design. So I think that's consistent with what you just indicated.
Yeah, and it might have just increased the fees now on this project.
Yeah. Well, we're sorry about that, but we appreciate the high-quality design. So I'd like to spend a little more time talking about sustainability and I know my first go-around on the commission, that was all about putting on the bells and whistles of the, of the, of the, you know, the solar arrays and whatever wind generation, however you could do it, but I was really hammered by one of my friends who's a sustainability expert, that the most important thing is how you reduce, is, is in the beginning that you have the most efficient building possible. So it's fantastic that you're getting to platinum, and I wholeheartedly support that. And I love that you're committing to the water neutrality, but I'm curious, you know, how, have you guys looked at how you're going to get there at this point? And added to that, my understanding is a, is a cooling tower uses a lot of water. So are there alternatives to using a cooling tower to try to reduce that demand?
You know, I think the best alternative for a cooling tower, which we've, we're doing in a lot of our other projects, is to use purple pipe reclaimed water for that. It adds maintenance to the equipment. Sometimes it actually impacts the warranty on the equipment, but we figured out how to do it. And I think that's probably the best step. A project of this size, that's really the most efficient way, from a power standpoint, to cool it, cool the project. Right? So we have to look at the electricity use as well, and that's a much more efficient way to cool it than having, you know, I'm making up a number, but hundreds of individual units that all have to be separately powered than consolidating into a, you know, a central plant.
I, I hear what you're saying. I, I, I might argue that what's more important is water savings right now than energy uses. We have tons of sun in California, somehow we're going to figure out how to capture it, but the water is, is more questionable. So if there's a way you could find a solution to that, that would be great, and I would urge you, I would urge the council to, you know, well, I would urge you to look at that in more depth. And then can you also confirm that you are an all-electric building, or you're not an all-electric building?
No, I think the language that was referenced states if we all are all-electric, then the following applies. But we have not, you know, made any decision on dual or electrical only at this point. We're having a very strong opinion from the food operators that they need gas in the kitchens. And, you know, what, what we talked about the very beginning of this, of this question and answer period was, you know, what I want to make sure is we don't make the retail any more challenging to rent. And operators that we're talking to say they really need gas to, for the food preparation in the kitchen.
Well, well done. You're turning my question around on me. I appreciate that. And then I'm happy to hear about the EV, because I was going to argue, you're going to get the demand. That, that spot that you were at at 17th and, in Santa Monica is, is packed all the time, and having the pipe in there is going to save you a lot of money in, in the future, and it's great to hear that you're planning on the transformer. Are there any, and then I read your letter, and you said that, you know, you were very proud of the cutting-edge sustainability features. Are there any other ones you want to highlight for us that we hadn't really talked about?
You know, we've got a big team here. Is there anything I'm missing, guys? I think, yeah, I think we listed, highlighted the, you know, the major ones in the, in the presentation in the letter.
Okay. And then I, I think I also read in your letter that you had asked, in the letter asked that we, we reaffirmed that a categorically exemption was appropriate on this. Like, did I read that right, and what's kind of the value of that to you?
If, if I can, let me bring Paula, Paula or Jan, yeah, Paula, would you come over?
Can you see me?
Yeah.
It's just that because the city already did an EIR for the downtown specific plan, and the project is consistent with the downtown specific plan, it does qualify for that CEQA exemption. And the EIR was done because, you know, in order to pride the public with all this additional information, but we, like other projects that have been consistent with the downtown specific plan, want to make sure that the CEQA exemption is on the record as well.
So you want, you want both environmental clearance, is that, okay, not just to acknowledge?
The city has done for the other projects that have had environmental impact reports since the downtown community plan, so it's just consistency.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. That is the end of my question. So I think what we want to do is turn to public comment now. And again, as we're starting that, I want to remind the public that there is a call-in number at the top of the agenda, and, and you're welcome to call, call in. As people are calling in, and Wendy's calculating numbers for us, I see a hand up for Commissioner Fresco. Commissioner Fresco, do you want to ask another quick question?
Just one more. I just wanted to give the applicant the opportunity, if they want to, or if it's of any interest to them, to show the public the model cam that I saw them testing before the meeting. Because it, I don't know, it's up to you if you feel like you want people to just see what's in that room there with you.
Yeah, no, we'd, we'd love to. We'll, we've got two things that are on the screen now. This is a, a model of, you know, majority of the lower downtown Santa Monica area, with a project there in the middle. I think the, there you go. And this is, that's a close-up, you pull back, you can see, when we pull back, David, you'll see more of, of what's there today. And then additional model we have is a higher-scale model of the actual project. We're in close on the project.
That's, that's a pretty decent view, right?
I think that's pretty respectful of the environment that it's coming into. At least, that's what I tried to do.
I think you did a nice job.
Now we have a full screen of it now, if you want to go one more time. I've turned all the commissioners' cameras off, pardon me, Chair.
Wendy, I was going to suggest, if possible, is there a way to hold that video on, while we're doing public comment, but maybe not, because I see somebody, I think it's being handheld camera, but it would be great if we could listen to public comment and take a look at this.
Absolutely, if they're okay with holding the camera and moving around. They have another model.
It's going to be pretty bouncy.
There's another model. Do you want to go to the other model, now that I have it on full screen? Thank you. Did you want to walk us through the model, Jeff, or it's pretty self-explanatory?
Yeah, let me, you know, this is what, David, kind of slide back, obviously, on the very right side, we're looking at 2nd Street. This is the frontage along Santa Monica Boulevard. Towards the left, there is the existing, today, this existing alley that, that dissects the site that we have converted into a pedestrian-only patio. The entire frontage that you're seeing here has no longer any curb cuts for vehicle traffic, and we accomplished the same thing along Ocean Avenue. These are the residential buildings. There's four of them. You know, we broke the buildings into separate buildings in separate heights for variation. Also, separate buildings creates a lot more light and air through the project. It certainly would have been cheaper to combine all those into one big building, but that's not what this office was going to do. There's the corner sculpture piece, which will be related to the retail space that's behind it. Obviously, the hotel in white, and as you move up Ocean Avenue, you'll step towards the museum and the two landmark buildings, which is there. It'd probably be hard to keep this on through the, through the call-in, just because it's, you know, it is handheld, and it's going to get pretty wobbly, and people might get a little...
Will you show us the 2nd Street elevation, too, please?
Yeah. Just turn that around. This is the elevation on 2nd Street with one apartment building here and a second one.
And the other.
What you see here, I mentioned earlier, is we have larger units, tenant-for-families, they'll actually have their own private yards up on that second floor level, you know, in the downtown, which is, which is pretty rare.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Whoever, Nina, good job. Let's get to our public comment. Wendy, can you tell us how many speakers we have?
Yes, we definitely have over seven, Chair. Thank you, 1, 2, 3, 4, I think the last time I counted, it was 13. Some have dropped out and are coming in, but we're definitely over seven, so the time automatically gets reduced to two minutes per speaker. And if you're ready, Chair, I'll, and I'll allow the first speaker in.
Please.
I have unmuted you, and you are now in the Planning Commission meeting live. Can you please state your name for the record?
My name is James Mary O'Connor.
Thank you so much. You'll have too many to speak, starting now.
Good evening, everybody. Chair Reese, Planning Commissioners. My name is James Mary O'Connor. I'm Design Principal with Morab Liddell and a lifetime Ocean Park resident, and I'd like to share some of my views of the design and, and the, and the work. And I have to say, this is a kind of extraordinary moment in, in time, I think, to see a city reviewing a project like this. In my mind, Frank Gehry's work has always been, the better work has always been, I think, where there's constraints, and the work seems to get better the more constraints there are. And, and this site seems to have lots of constraints. And, and it seems to bring out an incredible energy, I think, of, of looking and re-looking and mining the site and finding all kinds of opportunities. And you can see that across the project, the varying height, the, the, the sense of context where we are, the skyline of the city, the front line of the park, all seem to come to bear. There's no back door to... There's no back door to this project. It's all front. It's all animated. And it's very, very hard to find an architect who's doing two things at once. Creating, it seems odd, but creating architecture, but also creating a sense of place and a place for people. And um a kind of vibrant public realm, if you if you like. And and the energy that seems to be here is is one that is looking at the human experience as much as just looking at the cultural or architectural experience. And and the paseo and how it works through the spot is incredibly vibrant. I see this as being a very, I know there's been a lot of discussion about retail, but my God, if there's one place people will go, it's right here. Um, I also think I'd like to comment on the affordable housing, which is fantastic to have that kind of level. Um, and um
Thank you so much, Chair.
Say that.
That is your time.
I would like Am I finished?
Did you want to finish your sentence, sir?
Yes, I think our our teachers are one group that's often left out of the affordable. They they can't afford the price, they can't afford the rental, and they're left out of the affordable equation. So um and I hope this evening you will consider the staff's recommendation to approve this and and move it forward to the City Council and um and approve it. The best of luck. And looking forward to realizing this.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, caller. You've been unmuted. You're now live in the Planning Commission meeting. You'll have two minutes to state your comment. Can you please state your name for the record?
Hi, good evening. This is Danielle Wilson. Um, good evening, Chair Reese and Commissioners. I am speaking on behalf of United Here Local Eleven, the Hotel Workers Union. We represent thirty thousand housekeepers, dishwashers and cooks, thousands of whom work in Santa Monica hotels and live in this community. Please support this project as it is currently proposed. Since 2013, as everyone has heard a lot about tonight, our members have advocated for the design you see presented today. A hotel designed by world-class architects, affordable housing units working people can afford, and a cultural campus that offers a top-tier community benefit to our city. Our members participated in hours of the downtown community plan process and various hearings for this particular project for years in order to be able to see this project through today. A lead platinum project with publicly accessible open space, it is representative of our values as a Green Left organization. Our entire community debated for years over the mix of uses and design you see today. It is exactly what we need to be building in Santa Monica. Housing, near jobs, in transit, built to the highest sustainability and design standard. Please approve it today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Thank you, caller. Good evening, caller. You are now live in the Planning Commission meeting and you will have two minutes to state your comment. Can you please state your name clearly for the record?
My name is Jerry Rubin.
Hmm, hi, Jerry. Go ahead.
Thank you very, very much. Uh, that was an excellent staff report. My uh is uh Hannah Murray. And uh it was good to hear the uh report and the information from the Geary team, uh, Mr. Worth and from uh Mr. Geary himself. Uh, the project they've been working on for fifteen years, but I remember it's been nearly at least ten years since the first town hall meetings and board and commission meetings, where it was then received uh very highly. Uh, the redesign, uh, it actually looks uh really great. Um, I think it's gonna be an educational benefit. I think it's gonna be a sustainability benefit. I think it's gonna be an economic benefit, not only in and of itself, but to the whole downtown district and to the entire city. I love the observation deck that will be benefiting the schools. I'm glad it's gonna be another good union hotel in Santa Monica. I just hope that uh as we're coming out of COVID now and visitors are gonna start to come back, that this is a time to really try to speed the process through and know that uh good people are gonna mitigate and work out any of the things. As far as the transportation, more people riding on the bus and riding, uh, taking bikes. And that educational element to urge people to do that is the best thing for transportation. And some shuttles that are gonna get to the museum as well. So there's ways to work out these so-called uh unavoidable things that uh that we're talking, you were talking about. They can be avoided if we're all working on this together. But thank you very, very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry. Appreciate that. Very, Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening, caller. You're now live in the Planning Commission meeting. You'll have two minutes to state your public comment, but can you please state your name for the record?
Valerie Griffin.
Thank you, Valerie. Go ahead.
It is absolutely gorgeous. It looks like it belongs there. It looks like it belongs there for many, many, many generations. My sister was an architect. I wish she could have seen this. It's one of the most beautiful developments I have seen, period. I also love all of the sustainable, progressive, uh, green community benefits, the employment, the cultural center. I I can hardly wait to see the inside of that museum. I I truly think it's going to be one of the most amazing, fabulous things in Santa Monica for at least the next century. Thank you. And everybody vote for it. Everybody enjoy it. Bye.
Thank you, Valerie. Good evening, caller. You are now live in the Planning Commission meeting. You'll have two minutes to state your comment. Please state your name for the record.
Emily McCarron.
Thank you, Emily. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. I live in the mid-city area. I've been familiar with this project since 2018, when I attended a huge community meeting. I saw the models and heard from the applicant and from Frank Gehry himself, whose firm has brought us this outstanding design. I was enthusiastic about the project back then. I am more enthusiastic now, if that's possible. I'm impressed that Mr. Gehry and his designs have woven several different elements together to make the project work as a single experience. They have brought the old and the new together beautifully. They have placed housing and a hotel side by side harmoniously. And the whole project is drenched with culture. The buildings themselves are works of art. The one-of-a-kind museum will celebrate innovative design, will inspire people. The sculpture element on the corner will raise the spirits of everyone who sees it. Yesterday, I took a look at the renderings, which are available online. They are totally astonishing and really bring to life the exciting design, the colors, the beautiful walkways, and the other features of the project. I have a lot more I could say about the project, but I would go on past the time limit. Bottom line, I'm a big fan. Our city will be transformed when this project goes into operation. Please vote yes tonight. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Emily. Good evening, caller. You are now live in the Planning Commission meeting. You'll have two minutes to provide your comments. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Rebecca Davis. I represent Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility. And we submitted a comment, a written comment earlier today. And while we appreciate the remarkable nature of this project, we do have a few issues that we raised in our letter, um, specifically with regards to the EIR that was prepared. I'm just gonna briefly touch on one of the issues this evening, which is about the investigation into the um potential contamination of the soil and soil vapor below the project site. Um, the EIR, a Phase One environmental uh assessment was conducted. It concluded that there was a moderate to high potential for PCE and other chemical contamination of the soil as a result of former dry cleaner, both on the project site and one, um, I believe it was directly adjacent, but hydrologically up gradient of the site. And the EIR essentially says that um further conducting will be or further testing will be conducted at a later time and then mitigation proposed at a later date. And we really see that as a violation of SEQA and that this, the contamination needs to be um at least understood and adequate mitigation proposed at this time. Some of our members include construction workers who would be um exposed to this nation, and it's something we believe needs to be addressed under SEQA. So I thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Yeah, caller, please hold on. I think you have, you're gonna field a couple of questions here. Commissioner Raskin?
Yes, uh, thank you. Just just a a quick question. I I'm curious why compliance with applicable uh health and safety standards and building codes would not be sufficient to ensure health and safety?
Well, at this point, part of SEQA is also is investigating and disclosing the environmental impact. And at this point, without having investigated the whether there's contamination, the extent of contamination, um, that kind of leaves out the uh disclosure of the impact part of SEQA.
Okay, I I think I have a question too. I didn't quite hear, what what group are you with?
Sure, uh, Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility.
Supporters Alliance for, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next.
Good evening. You are live in the Planning Commission meeting. You will have two minutes to provide your comment. Can you please state your name for the record?
Hank Koenig.
One more time, please?
Hank Koenig.
I thought that was you, Mr. Koenig. Thank you so much. Your time begins now.
Chair Commissioners, I want to thank Roxanne for a great presentation and also Commissioner Fresco's cat with a great cameo. I was present at the first community meeting for this project almost a decade ago. What was presented then was a stunning, beautifully conceived project, and I wholeheartedly supported it. The bruises have healed. Over the years, the project has changed. I think the biggest architectural change being the height of the buildings reduced, although I think that's a shame. I think there are many aspects of the project that have gotten better through the uh extensive community and staff input. Um, it far exceeds the expectation of the loose. The architectural design is beautiful. It includes much-needed housing, includes a commendable twenty-five percent affordable housing, includes preservation of uh historical buildings, turning them into fabulous community attraction. What is not to like? Sure, there are various details to be resolved, many of which, as Roxanne mentioned, will be worked out in the subsequent many uh approval uh processes that are required, such as landmark commission, coastal building permit, with all the many departmental sign-offs required, which includes mobility, sustainability, public works, building and safety, fire department, health uh department, et cetera, et cetera. And they will uh uh work through all those technical issues in that process. I urge you to approve this project. Uh, it's been many years coming and it will be a fa- fabulous asset to Santa Monica. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Koenig.
Good evening, Chair. Uh, good evening, caller. You are now live in the Planning Commission meeting. You will have two minutes to state your comment. Please state your name for the record.
Do you?
Caller, you're live in the
Hello?
Hello, please state your name for the record. And if you're listening to the meeting on another device, please turn that volume down to avoid feedback.
Uh, no, I'm not listening on another device. My name is Chris Chamberlain and uh just a couple of quick things. Oh, the great presentation, by the way. Thank you. And I did like the Commissioner's cat. That was an excellent addition as well. I'm curious as to if everything went uh perfect, when would groundbreaking happen on that location? Um, it doesn't sound like this is a question and answer thing, so that is a question. Um, also, uh, there were certain units reserved for tenants. Uh, if there are more tenants then uh are applying uh for these um uh units, uh, would all tenants be able to get access to the building after it was completed? And I'm curious for Mr. Geary, uh, you talked about body language in the building. I'm curious if you were, what is the uh body language that the building emits? That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, caller. You are live in the Planning Commission meeting. You will have two minutes for your comment. Can you please state your name for the record?
Hi, this is Leonore Kimner.
Hi, please go right ahead.
Uh, hi, uh, I'm Executive Director of Abundant Housing LA. We're a pro housing outreach and advocacy organization. Uh, our projects committee, which is a volunteer-run projects committee, reviewed this project and decided to write an enthusiastic letter of support. Um, this project is consistent with our organization's goals to make sure that we're increasing housing production in high-cost areas with access to transit, um, clean air that serves our region's environmental goals. Um, and of course, it it provides a lot of badly needed housing. Um, we're very excited to see a lot of affordable housing on this site. And um, you know, I'm personally a resident in Santa Monica and I'm very excited that this project is coming to the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, caller. You're live in the Planning Commission meeting. You have two minutes for your comment. Please state your name for the record.
Carl Hanson.
Thank you, Carl. Go right ahead.
Hi, yeah, I'm Carl Hanson, a former housing commissioner and resident of the Wilmont neighborhood, living walking distance from the project site. But uh, speaking tonight, in my my role as co-chair of Santa Monica Forward. Uh, Santa Monica Forward strongly supports the Ocean Avenue project and urges you to follow staff's recommendations to approve. The proposed project is consistent, excuse me, with uh current downtown planning requirements. It is a significant project located on a prominent corner of downtown Santa Monica, a hub of resident and visitor activity year round. The project encompasses a wide range of elements, adaptive reuse of historic structures, an improved pedestrian experience, union jobs, a substantial housing commitment, uh, lead platinum design, uh, the city's only public observation deck, um, and an important cultural component. And and also, it's a truly significant hotel in design. Um, like many Santa Monicans, you know, I I spent a lot of time during the pandemic walking around Santa Monica, Santa Monica's wonderful neighborhood, and have enjoyed some of the great architecture we have in town, uh, including some of the early buildings by Gehry. Um, I'm really excited that with this project, we have the opportunity to add a building of such iconic design um, from our most famous hometown architect. Uh, please move this exciting project forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, caller. You are now live in the Planning Commission meeting. You have two minutes to state your comment. Can you please state your name for the record?
Zachary Gaidzik.
Thank you, Zachary. Go right ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. As I said, my name is Zachary Gaidzik and I'm a lifelong resident of Santa Monica, currently serving as the West Metro Field Deputy for Supervisor, LA County Supervisor Sheila Kuhl. I'm also a member of the Board of Directors of Ocean Park Association and a former member of Climate Action Santa Monica Steering Committee. However, uh, tonight, I, my opinions I express are mine and mine alone. I urge you to please vote to approve the recommendations from staff and send the project along to City Council for further review and approval. You know, as those of you know, have been paying attention, know this project has been in the works for so many years and has undergone such an evolution that has really made a fantastic concept and turned it into a truly great project. I'm so thrilled to be able to support this. And I really want to emphasize the environmental sustainability that really goes beyond the simplicity of rainwater capture or solar panels, that really looks at sustainability at its core and climate resiliency and says what that means. That's why I believe Platinum certification is so great. But also, this historic viewing deck that is gonna be created, um, you know, But also, this historic viewing deck that is going to be created, you know, a public viewing deck from which visitors, residents, and children will be able to take in the spectacular 360-degree view of Santa Monica Bay from Palos Verdes to Point Dume and around the Santa Monica Mountains, a view that today is given pretty much exclusively to our vehicles and the parking structures and the random HVAC maintenance workers. I believe everyone should have access to that incredible view. So I'm just so thrilled to support this, so I hope you please consider the outstanding design, the wide range of benefits the project offers, and vote yes. Thanks so much to city staff for the work on this complex proposal. And Commissioners, thank you so much for your time. Good night.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, caller. You are now live in the Planning Commission meeting. You will have two minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record.
This is Sharon. I'm a current resident at 1357 Ocean. I live in the building that's about to be, or that is here to be discussed about being demolished. I did look at the rendering. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
All right. I did look at the rendering, and the first question that came to mind is that we've got a pretty amazing view of the sunset, and your buildings are extremely reflective, so I don't know how that is going to take an effect on the people driving cars and possibly getting into accidents, getting blinded by the sunset reflecting off all of these buildings. But that just was the first thing that really struck out to me that seems pretty obvious. There seems to be a lot of issues that are seemingly obvious but maybe possibly overlooked because we have the iconic Frank Gehry with our, our presence here, and maybe some important things were overlooked. I did appreciate Commissioner Sean, forget his last name, Sean Landres' concern about the, more of the people and what the people have to say about this project. I felt that really not enough time was dedicated to allow us to have opinion about the effects of this monstrosity. There's, there's a lot of things I'd like to say, but because we only have two minutes, I'm just going to say what happens to the people that are currently living in the building that is going to be demolished, because we're all very concerned, and we haven't had anyone inform us of anything that's supposed to happen. And I've sent emails, but there's no response, and it's just kind of like we're looking at this, you know, beautiful thing without looking at really the effects. I, I have so many things I'd love to say, but I will definitely wrap it up with, I, we're all very concerned about what is supposed to happen to us. We're, we're living here, and all of a sudden, there's this huge change, and there's no answers.
Thank you, caller. That, that was your two minutes. I appreciate your comment. Chair?
No, I was just going to say thank you, and I imagine that you're going to hear some responses to your comments in, in the rebuttal.
Good evening, caller. You are live in the Planning Commission meeting. You will have two minutes for your comment. Please state your name for the record. Caller?
Oh, hello?
Hello, hi. You're live in the Planning Commission meeting. Please state your name for the record.
Hi. My name is Lauren Ruvo.
Hi, Lauren. You'll have two minutes for your comment. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Ruvo, as I said. I am speaking tonight on behalf of my young family, and I apologize if you hear crying in the background. I have a three-week-old. And I'm speaking in support of the Ocean Avenue project. I believe that the Ocean Avenue project is a great fit for downtown Santa Monica, and the project is particularly timely. The Ocean Avenue project will offer many valuable community benefits, especially for a young family like mine. The museum will add a family-friendly attraction that will be great for children of all ages. Additionally, I appreciate the thoughtfulness of the layout of the project, providing a lot of publicly accessible, open space on both the ground level and the observation deck. This will be a great place to meet up with other families on the weekend. On a personal note, this project is particularly meaningful to our family as it is designed by Frank Gehry. Gehry also designed the Cleveland Clinic Lou Ruvo Center for Brain Health located in Las Vegas, Nevada, which is dedicated to my grandfather, Lou Ruvo, who was a victim of Alzheimer's disease. I have seen firsthand the positive impact Gehry's work has had on the greater Las Vegas community, and have no doubt that the same will happen in Santa Monica with the Ocean Avenue project. The unparalleled visions that Frank Gehry brings to life are spectacular, and I believe the Ocean Avenue project will be yet another celebrated design. I urge you to swiftly approve the Ocean Avenue project. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Good evening, caller. You are now live in the Planning Commission meeting. You'll have two minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Elizabeth Lair. And I first want to say that on this property, at Blue Plate Astoria, was where I last saw my dad alive. And that was in 2013. Also, when he used to live down the street, he went to and loved going to Bellevue Restaurant. He loved the Bulliabais. He also loved Rebecca's in Venice, so, you know, I'm a fan, I was a fan, you know, he was a fan back then when Frank Gehry did the sculptures in that restaurant. My question is this, why are the landmark buildings reversed in the renditions? Are they truly going to be lifted up and placed in a different, placed opposite of what they look like in the renditions? And, and why that wasn't, Nina, wondering, you know, wondering why you didn't say something about this, about the landmark buildings? And then finally, how many Santa Monica residents are going to be displaced? Thank you.
Thank you. And the last caller, Chair, this is the last caller we have this evening. Good evening, caller. You are live in the Planning Commission meeting. You'll have two minutes for your comments. Please state your name for the record.
Melissa Schreiber.
Thank you so much. Go ahead, your time starts now.
I would like to speak in, to approve this project. I've been a renter in the city of Santa Monica for many years, since the 90s. I've been a homeowner in Santa Monica. I think that the educational benefits to the community are huge. I can't imagine how many children will be inspired to go on and study art and architecture from their field trips that are free. I think that it's a cultural jewel for the city. It will enliven the public spaces. We've seen what has happened to the promenade. This is a new tourist draw. It is, you know, top-tier design. The city should be so honored that its longtime resident and iconic artist, Frank Gehry, is contributing such a beautiful landmark to our city. I just really urge the Commissioners to approve this project. I'd be very, very proud to visit it and live in a city that hosts such a remarkable architectural landmark.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so that was the end of our public testimony, and I think at this point, return to the applicant for their rebuttal. And there are a couple items I, I think you want to respond to. And just from my notes, it's the comment about the EIR, construction timeline, and the tenant information. Is that minimal?
Great, so, a couple of things. I wrote down all the questions as quickly as I could. As far as the first one, the existing tenants, the very first thing we did before we started this project, we met with the rent control board. And there's a very clear program for displaced tenants. That's the term that's used in the DA. It's very well documented. It was mentioned in the presentation. Every tenant will be moved to another building and moved back in. The entire time, they'll be paying the same rent they pay now. So any additional rent that's owed to the new building they're currently in at, during the construction, we make up the difference for, moving back into this new project at their similar rent. That's very well documented. I can tell you, we have to confirm some email addresses because no notices have been received by us in the office from that caller. So we'll make sure everyone has accurate email and phone numbers, which they probably should already. Groundbreaking, we're projecting somewhere in the range of July of 2024. Obviously, I've been off a few years already in this project, so don't hold us to anything like that. This was supposed to be long completed by now, so who exactly, that, that's our target. Who knows if we actually can meet it? An earlier comment, there is a city standard for quantity of onsite water storage, so obviously, we would, we would meet that with our onsite water storage. There was a question about the landmarks and why they're reversed. We are keeping both landmarks the same distance from Ocean Avenue as they exist today. By reversing them, we open up a larger plaza to the project, to the entire project, because the Spanish colonial is actually right at the sidewalk, and by bringing it over to the far end of the project, it gives us a bigger plaza space as part of that open space in front of the museum. As far as, finally, as far as the, this question on the soil contamination, I, we do believe it was adequately studied. This is not a, you know, uncommon, you know, situation. We, we're completing a project right now that had similar underground garage, it had contaminated soil. You have to, you have to test it, you have to document it, you have to dispose it properly. It's not a very difficult thing to do, and we definitely would intend to be doing it here, and we think it was covered, and we will handle it properly going forward. That's all I think that we had, unless there's other questions that we missed.
I think that, I, I think that's it, but I think now we can turn to some more questions from Commissioners, and I see Commissioner Landers with a hand up.
Yes, thanks again for all of this. I, I want to pick up something that you said earlier. We didn't hear from the public explicitly on it, but you said that you were hearing from your restaurateurs that they really need gas. And I, I totally respect that. I understand where it's coming from. We did some research in preparation for the pending community kitchen incubator, which is going to be the state-of-the-art commercial kitchen, and it's going to be electric, with some training for, for those entrepreneurs. I would, I believe that there's a decent chance that between now and when you open, the rules about gas versus electric are going to change. And so I would like to know that if they do change, you'll change with them, and you'll educate your, your restaurateurs. I would hate to see gas vested in this DA. I'm not saying I'm going to accelerate the, I'll, I'll avoid the accelerant puns. I'm not saying I want to accelerate the process with your project. I just want to make sure that if the standards change, you'll adapt reopening. Is that a fair request?
Yeah, it's fair, and I think you bring up the point, is this is, this is becoming more common, right, across the country? And people are going to start adapting to the new versus what they're used to. So what we're talking to is people that are currently using gas and are used to it, and it works for them. I think over time, this is going to evolve, so we're happy to evolve with it.
Great, and then what about on the residential side? Are you currently planning gas installations, or are you planning to do all-electric in the, in the apartment units?
Yeah, I mean, the current plan was for dual. I mean, that was what, you know, but we hadn't set it in stone yet, so to speak, but that was the thinking, you know, we, we just hadn't gotten that part designing entirety of the project.
Okay. So I would just, I would just make a note to staff, perhaps, that we just make sure that there's no language that vests them at dual, and that they're consistent with building codes all the way through. I don't, I, I wish, I mean, I would want to encourage you to make the conversion sooner. I think that puts you on the cutting edge, but I recognize that that's, that's going to be a difficult statewide transition or citywide transition, but I'd love to see that. I'd love to make sure that you, you have, we have the flexibility, and you are, you are flexible, so thank you. That's, that's my question. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, do we have any other questions, or should we close the public hearing and go to public testimony? I mean, to Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Fresco?
Can we take a quick break before we go into discussion?
Yeah, that's fine. That's, it's a good idea, but let's just make sure we don't have any other questions. I don't really think I see any more out there, but, okay. I have 8:35, let's say, 8:34. Let's come back at 8:40 and have our discussion. and have our discussion. Okay, we're waiting for a couple of commissioners to come back. Okay. We're missing Commissioner Landers. There we go. All right, let's get started with discussion. Who would like to open up the discussion? The guy frozen or all you guys frozen?
You're the guy frozen.
I raised my hand, but I also saw Commissioner Tolkien did, and he hasn't yet, spoken yet, so I thought I'd defer.
Okay, great. I went through all the documents that were sent to me, yeah, by staff and also the ones that obviously the applicant. I find this is much more, much improved project than the originals that I saw some years ago. I had some questions about sustainability. I looked through the documents and I think there is room for improvement in all of that, including in the solar panels on the roof and stuff which is not really laid out so that you could. I mean, from a design standpoint, I think it still all could be handled. I don't know how you get that done. You guys instruct me because I'm not sure that, that it's not a building department issue in some cases because of the law. Anyway, that's, that's my feeling. I think, you know, enassing and in scale, the project is so much better than the original.
Well, Commissioner Tolkien, I think if you could articulate more what you mean on the, I think you need to give us a little more detail on what you're looking for, but in, we're in this situation. We're recommending to the council and we could certainly recommend that other sustainability issues be considered.
Well, I mean, even things that you mentioned here, including the, you know, storage tank for, for water, for gray water and, and those elements have not been quantified, it seems. And I don't think the solar panels have been quantified and all the areas that could be used have not been quantified. So I don't know how you do that in the language that you're going to send to the council.
Well, I sent, I sense, and we can ask, but we can add, open the public, we can open the hearing again and ask the question. But I sense those are all requirements that will be imposed through the building safety process. The question, the question, I guess, is are we going to push them to go past what is in code? Or are we just let, let them deal with code? And I sense that at this point with an early entitlement, you don't spend the money on that kind of, on those types of aspects of a project, so you know you have a project and, and that will come up in building safety. So I don't have a great solution for you on that.
Well, that was my thought, so that's why I wasn't talking about it dramatically here. As far as the, as I say, the massing and just the layout of the project and the way it operates in terms of, you know, access for parking, access for bikes, access for, I think it's, it's workable. And the massing is good. You know, I don't want to get into a comment about the architecture because I may not be on the same page exactly, so. And it's, it's maybe not planning, a planning issue.
You will find out. It's only your second time. We're not always on the same page. So it's okay to have a diverse, a diverse set of opinions.
May I just offer something?
Yes.
Uh, in, in terms of what they're required to do for sustainability, it's all in the DA document. And all the benchmarks they're supposed to reach and some of the ways they're going to reach them are all laid out there and you can find it there. And you'll see that even though the current plans don't show all of that stuff, that's all going to be required of them and will be worked out later. So it's all there.
Well, that's, that was my thought.
Yeah, it's not missing.
Okay, Commissioner Landers.
Yeah, I mean, in the spirit of moving forward, I, I would, first of all, like to, to say again, I, I really think this is a, I mean, there's just something. To me, there's just something joyful about this project. I mean, it brings, it brings housing and it brings, it brings light and it brings art and it brings historic preservation. I mean, it, it's bringing, it's just bringing so much to our community. And I think the questions tonight are, are helping strengthen it and get us to, you know, get it to where it needs to be and get the DA to where it needs to be. But at the core, I think this is, you know, exa, I think this is exactly the kind of project that, that was envisioned when we thought about making the highest and best use of, of these opportunity sites in the, in the DCP. So I'm really excited to see this come to Anamoneka. And I think we have the opportunity to recommend a, a strong agreement to, to council. To that end, I had sent staff some, some suggested language. I don't know if they've had a chance to look at it. I know Chair that you had raised some concerns about the language of the LUP amendment. And I, I will say that I went and looked up the Miramar LUP amendment, which, the text of which does reference the DCP. It, it does contain a lower FAR, but it, it actually relates that FAR to the DCP standards, which I think is a lot, a better way of describing it, as you pointed out. So it doesn't feel like a very focused individual site text amendment. It's in a context. And then I would like to, I'll just say, I would like to see the references to clean and safe stricken entirely, so that it actually is that, it is in fact the same language as was used in the Miramar DA with a different number, minus the commercial kitchen. So if we can just go back to that original text, I think it would be helpful. And then I did send proposed language, which I think staff was going to play with to, to provide some funding or at least some priority funding from the TIF funds for the Ocean Avenue area. So, I mean, I'd be prepared to move the item with all of Commissioner Fresco's, the amendments that we saw before the meeting. But I would like to see the language, you know, we, I know we like to see language. So I'm wondering if staff has anything to share with us.
Okay, you know, I, I appreciate your, your desire to move this quickly. What I'd like to do is just a, a quick round of comments from people to make sure that we're, we, I sense we potentially have four votes heading in the right direction, but I want to get a, a sense from the commission before we start doing that.
I said would move. I didn't say, but I, but before we do, staff for, can I, I'd like to see if staff has language for us to look at. That's, that's.
Okay, have staff work on that while we're making our first round of comments. Commissioner Lambert, you're next.
Um, I just want to second everything Sean said and, and the amendments that have come forward so far. I agree with you on the FAR. What worries me more than anything is if somebody made a mathematical error and the FAR is actually two point nine six. So I, I really think we should not stick to the two point nine five. All that said, I am just, I've been on the planning commission for six years and I don't think I've ever seen a more perfect project. I am so thrilled with this project and what it's going to do for the city. The design, the, the development team has been totally responsive to the city and to the residents' input. Mr. Gary is beyond words in terms of the design. He's come up with is just beautiful. I am very, very, very happy to vote in favor of this project. I think it will be a giant asset for the city.
Great. Commissioner Fresco.
Um, yes, what she said and what he said. And basically, I just wanted to ask staff what the first thing we're supposed to be commenting on, voting. I just don't understand the structure of what we need to do and if we need to vote on the red lines you showed us in the beginning or if you have, were just saying, what, what, tell us what we have to do.
Let me, let me take a quick shot at that. If I'm wrong, staff can correct me, but the way, because I get the little cheat sheet as the chair and what they want us to do is work on the LE, the, approve the, the recommendation for the LUP update first. Then they want us to get into a resolution recommending to the city council fire about the EIR and the development agreement.
Okay, thank you. I suggest we do one at a time.
Okay, so Rox, I think Roxanne wants to say something.
I do. Thank you. Hi, everybody. So, and I'm, and I'm certainly open to suggestions from other staff on this. It is true, we are asking this commission to make a positive recommendation on the two resolutions. Those resolutions are making recommendations to the council to approve the LUP amendment and to also recommend approval of certifying the EIR and basically approving the development agreement. And so those would be the motions. What we do want is exactly what I think is starting to emerge out of the discussion, which is your recommendations and comments on issues that you would like to see modified language in the DA. I've heard a number of topics. I've seen some draft language. I, I would just say, you know, and I know Jean's not here today, but my preference, I know she likes to draft, but my preference on this would be to gather everybody's comments where there's agreement on. So you would vote and say, we all, for instance, take a vote on the, the economic equity contribution language change. I'm just using that as a simple one. And then we would go back and draft that. Could I draft something on the screen and present it to you right now? I probably could, but some of these other issues that are being discussed, I really think we do need to do some wordsmithing, some drafting and making sure we're not, we're not crisscrossing because some of these topics about uses and FAR and things are sort of embedded in multiple places. But I do want this commission to provide the recommendations, allow us to have that list of, of recommendations. This is what happened with St. John's, right? We took off some of them and we recommended some of them. If you, we didn't, but we presented all of the recommendations to council. I know we did some drafting before the meeting, but right now, I think from the list that I'm seeing, I'm not sure. For instance, the, the money regarding the TIF allocating some of that. I think in concept, that's something that we might say, okay, that's something, we understand the purpose, but I would want to sit down and have a moment with Mobility, their fuller team, ask if that might inadvertently stymie another project or something like that. Because it's written in a way saying if there's no funding for the study versus saying we need the funds for something else. I think that would be my preference that we take your comments sort of in concept and let us work on it. If anyone else, of course, on the city team, David, Susan, Heidi, anyone else has anything to add or maybe that's not the right approach, please, please do let me know, but that's my thought. Thank you for letting me say that.
Sean, I'll comment after you do, so go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate where you're coming from, Roxanne. I, I think to the extent that the commission can express itself clearly in language that we agree on, that is beneficial. We are obviously, as you stated, making recommendations to council, but regretfully, I have seen situations where we have voted on concepts and then the language that has gone to council has not really fully reflected what we thought as a commission we were saying. So even if we say something that, you know, this is only a recommendation. This is not getting written into law until it gets to council. If we can agree on language, I think it's important for that language to be forwarded to council as we agree on it. And then if you want to come back and rewrite it, I'm cool with that. But I don't want us to, 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 to vote on something in concept and then have the staff decide what the words are, rather than us decide when we're capable of doing that. And I think in the instances that we've all raised, we are capable of quickly agreeing on language that reflects our views.
Right, let's, let's see if we can actually accommodate that. Wait.
Okay, fair enough.
Yes, I mean, I, I think some language was supplied to staff. And I believe if you want to work off of that, that would be the best way to start and probably the easiest because I, I think what Roxanne is saying is we don't feel like we're in a position to do that drafting. And therefore we can just focus on what you've drafted. I did have a question though about the LUP amendment and exactly what it is you were hoping to accomplish by that. Because.
I'll take the lead on that. I just think that what you're trying to do with the LUP is, is make it site specific now for the FAR for this particular project, which I still haven't gotten to total four votes, but I think I have four votes there to move the project. And we all want the project to go forward, but it might not. And then we've constrained ourselves for some future development that has to come back and do a local coastal plan amendment. When we, when the 4.0 is already consistent with our DCP, I think that we could use the 4.0 as the max. This project on this site is coming in at 2.9, similar to what they did. Commissioner Landers just talked about this, what we did on the Miramar. So it's to allow flexibility in case something happens with this project.
Right, I think we would need to check in with Roxanne, just, I'm sorry, with Rachel to make sure that we're still within the confines of what was analyzed in the EIR. And that's my concern, just to make sure we, we stay in that parameter.
Yeah, we don't, we, I don't want to blow up the EIR. I, so I agree with you.
Hit, can I clarify, can it, Chair, can I clarify that those are two separate issues, right? The one issue is what's the top line on the, what's the top line FAR that's permitted under the amendment? That we don't want to break the EIR, right? We, we agree on that. Second thing is also, I, I appreciated in the, and I, and I think I heard the Chair saying this earlier. I appreciate him bringing it to our attention that, that this, that the way the LUP amendment is written doesn't actually put, it feels like, and we've heard council members address this, it feels a little bit like spot zoning, right? Which of course it is because this is a DA. But I think in the Miramar version of the amendment, that, that well within clause was super helpful in terms of both showing the, showing ourselves and showing the public and showing the coastal commission that this is actually part of a process and not a standalone amendment within the actual text of the document. I don't think it breaks the EIR to include that ref, that well within reference. So we're actually saying, hey, this is actually, this is in a context of our DCP. It's not independent of that.
Can I ask a question, Jim?
Yes, go right ahead.
Isn't it true that an EIR was done for the DCP that included the 130 feet and 4.0 FAR? So I mean, we're within that FAR, we're within that EIR, we're, we're within the bounds of that, the DCP.
Yeah. If I may, that, that is, that's exactly correct. That is why it is exempt technically. That's why we have that language about the project being exempt because it was covered by the DCP. And that is why Ms. Lamar was saying that while we, while we, while the project is exempt under CEQA, we did an EIR for disclosure information and to analyze the shade shadow impacts as well.
So there's no EIR impact for this project if we go with 4.0, it's already been covered by the DCP EIR. So there's no EIR impact for this project if we go with 4.0, it's already been covered by the DCP EIR.
Correct. I mean, we, we could, we would have to take a look at it. I think, you know, the EIR right now is, is an extra defense. Um, you know, if, if the increase, I'll have to consult with our, um, EIR consultant. Depends on the extent of the increase. We may be able to discover it under the, in Arata.
You know, commissioners, what I think, what I'm hearing is maybe what we should do is go through and make our comments. And if we can't come to, come to agreement on the language, it sounds like we could face where, what I would suggest is we just put this on. We let, give all of our comments, let staff write this, come back to us at the next year and show us the, the language. I don't think anybody really wants to do that, but that could be the cleanest way to do it unless we're very concise in our language. Because I also agree, I don't really like the concept of where we give our opinion and, and, and it doesn't always get passed on the way we've, we've given it. So let's try to move forward with our discussion a little bit and see if we can resolve some of these issues. And if not, we just know that we'll have to come back a second meeting to look at the final language. Commissioner Fresco.
Um, regarding this loose issue in particular, um, I don't actually see it as quite as big a deal maybe as you do. Because the reason we have to amend the loose for this project right now is because the bigger redo of the loose that we were starting to do and then we had to stop when we lost Liz Barrell. Um, is going to bring the whole loose into compliance with the DCP. And so this really is an intermediate kind of stopgap amendment for this project. The whole update of the, uh, uh, coastal plan is a different project. And I think that this change is appropriate to focus on the current project and not on compliance with our entire loose.
Well, you, I, you have a slightly different understanding than me. I thought they were going through these, these, they were going through this in 2018. It got put on hold. These would be amendments to that process once they got the process moving again.
No, we have to start all over again on, on the LUP amendment, though, um.
But would it, but then are you, was Nina's indicating that this little piece would go by itself and get?
Yeah, that's true. It would.
With the coast, with the Coastal Commission right now, we would get that corrected and then we'd go back and do the whole thing?
Unfortunately, yes. So this would be, this would be just to amend the 1992 LUP versus the 2018 LUP. Which was sort of, uh, sort of an entire restatement of the LUP. So this would just be considered just an amendment. Um, and I'm wondering if the applicant would like to weigh in here on, uh, on this. This may not be a concern to them. They would be the ones to have to push this through the Coastal Commission. So maybe Paula would like to speak on this.
I thought we were really in discussion, but since Paul is in front of us, go ahead.
Hi, Commissioner. We, we pulled up the Miramar amendment and we are fine with adding comma. Well within the maximum 4.0 FAR for this site in the city's downtown community. Full coastal plan update, land use plan, final draft, October 2018. And I just sent that language to city staff. That doesn't concern us.
Perfect. Okay, I take it back. Thank you very much for commenting.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't think we got all the way through our first round of comments of yay, I like the project, hey, I hate the project. So I don't know. We've heard from Ellis, Mario, yet, or myself.
I'm happy to jump in here if.
Please do.
That's fine. Yeah, I mean, first and foremost, this is an extremely consequential project for the history of the city. Uh, and I, I am, uh, going to be supporting this. Um, just a few observations. First with respect to CEQA. Um, you know, the exception for consistency with a specific plan in, in guideline section 1512 is kind of weird when applied to, uh, uh, the coastal zone and especially in areas where there isn't a certified LCP. But, uh, legally, I don't think that we have any discretion to find that this is not exempt from CEQA uh, under the specific circumstances here. You know, I, I, I think that we should, uh, recommend to the city council that when they do consider whether to certify the EIR, that they should, uh, look at potentially finding that there is not a significant and unavoidable impact with respect to LOS. Um, I, I, you know, this might be something that's just specific to this project, given the timeframe here. But I don't necessarily want to set a precedent for anything else moving forward. You know, with respect to Rebecca Davis, who's, who's a fantastic environmental attorney, I've, I've, you know, look, I, I scrutinize environmental darkness in the city harder than anyone. And I, I do think that there's substantial evidence to find that there are no, uh, significant impacts with respect to hazards and air contaminants. Um, you know, I, I don't have much else to say except that, um. You know, I, I think, uh, you know, if we, if, if there's any possible way to avoid situation where we'd be coming back and then we have to, you know, delay the city council hearing, I think we should, we should try to not do that. A little bit concerned that we might throw off some sort of noticing timeframe. We come back at our June 1st meeting. Um, well, I guess not if it, if it's going to go to the council in July, but, um, I don't know. Something that's been gnawing in the back of my mind.
I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's anyone's preference, but.
All right, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fontanardi.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of this project. I'm always disappointed at the level of attention to the sustainability issues at the beginning of a project. On a project like this, if you really need to get to net zero, as we all do, you would have that baked into your design right from the get-go. They chose not to do that. They're not required to do that. But in terms of sustainability, if you want to move the needle, you have to change how you work, you have to change how you sequence things. Um, I, I would like to ask another question, which is, you know, this is a big object and it's going to take up a lot of airspace and it's going to block a lot of views. Uh, and the payoff is you get a roof deck that's, you know, 120 feet in the air, which is good. But I think that roof deck should be free. I think that it should be open to the public, specify the hours. Uh, but a $1 fee is almost like a nuisance fee. It's just enough to discourage people. Uh, but this should be something that is given freely because airspace is taken away freely by this particular DA that was allowed in the DCP. So we're getting something back, but then there's a little hook attached. It's $1 for everybody going up there. I think that's very cheesy, given the size of this project.
Thank you. Um, I'll just put my two cents in there that there's a lot of ornaments on this Christmas tree. And this Christmas tree looks very beautiful at this point. So I think it's a very well-done project. It's things that we, we're only seeing a 2.9 FAR. There's 25% affordable in it and it's are being relocated. They're doing adaptive reuse without really requesting a TFR here. So that's really a huge, I mean, in my mind is another huge benefit. Cultural Center will be, will, will have a cultural center in our community. It'll be open free to us once a month. The LEED Platinum is pretty fantastic, although I agree with what Commissioner Fontanardi said. The fact that there's no curb cuts for, what was it, 380 feet we heard tonight? Very unheard of. Um, local hire and internships, everything we've talked about in the past, it's union friendly. And I, I had on here a revenue stream for the schools just because of that $1, but we'll talk about that in a little, in, in a little while, I think. So I'm very supportive of this. I thought the environmental was, um, very well done, very comprehensive as well. And in fact, in looking at the EIR in section 3.10, they did this fantastic job of outlining consistency with all of our, our policies in the city. Um, so maybe with that, what I would say is we're heading towards an approval. Are they, does anybody have anything to say about the site plan at this point? I want to check that box off. Are there any tweaks that anybody is considering or thinking about? I haven't heard it, but I want to give that opportunity.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to address what that, uh, public speaker who wanted to know about the switching of the historic building said that relates to the site plan. Um, I think, um, what Mr. Worth said about how it creates a, a better space, uh, for the courtyard in front of the buildings is absolutely correct. And I think that, uh, the Queen Anne Building, because he does, they do preserve the setbacks, the original setbacks. Queen Anne Building would get lost behind the other building and all the other things that are going on the site. So I think this is a way of reducing impacts of the rest of the project on the landmarks and it's a really good idea.
Great. Okay, um, no other comments on that. Then EIR comments, is there anybody? I, again, I think everyone's comfortable with the EIR as a chance. Go ahead, Commissioner Landers.
I mean, I'm going to echo what Commissioner Raskin said. I, I just, I really am not comfortable with the section referencing the LOS. I'd like to see, I don't think it's enough to put it in the staff report because honestly, I missed it in the staff report. I went right to the transportation section of the EIR and I saw no discussion of the fact that VMT supersedes. And so, um, I, I think that, I think that we need to make that explicit in the EIR for, for the reasons that Commissioner Raskin named. And, uh, and unless I'm missing, I mean, like, unless I'm missing something drastic, uh, I think it's important that we, that, that we make that clear.
Well, okay, I, I think that's a good point and I, I tend to agree with you because I think that the, if we were doing VMT, that would go away. So maybe that's part of the statement of overriding considerations that is written into this group. I'll get you to second, Commissioner Fontanardi.
There you go. Yeah, that's a great.
Statement of overriding considerations that this is a, you know, it does all these public benefits. And by the way, if it was using current, uh, traffic laws and VMT, it wouldn't even have this impact. And that's a way of really making it clear.
Yeah, why ask staff? I mean, the, the, you know, even in like T2A on page ES 59, I've been looking at like ES 59.
We really want to, we really want to?
I, I'm not, let me just bear with me for a second because this is going to coastal. Um, there's a, there's a, there's a reference in T2A to Coastal Commission requirements. And it says that the VMT is for informational purposes only. Where are we telling, to the extent that any of this is going to Coastal Commission, which presumably is now living in VMT land? Um, how are we doing ourselves any favors by dismissing our VMT analysis? I actually think the, are we, are we saying that this project, I mean, at, at some point, somebody might want to actually lock in that VMT analysis since the project's submission date is going to be after the law change? I just, I'm just.
Can I just mention that, you know, for, for purposes of coastal, I don't think they, they strictly follow the CEQA. They have their own regulatory process which deviates from CEQA and focuses on like, in, you know, the impacts that are related to coastal access and the things that are within their purview. So I don't think for, for CEQA purposes, you have to worry about Coastal Commission and VNT analysis.
Even to the, even, even with respect to parking minimums for the number of, the number of vehicles moving through, I mean.
I, you know, I mean, they may look at parking with respect to coastal access issues. Um, yeah. But I don't think they look at GHG analysis, uh, you know, in the way that you're thinking they would.
Okay, I just feel, I feel. Not, it's not purely inform, I mean, the VMT is bringing us up to date. The whole EIR is purely informational, right? We are categorically exempt here. So to kind of diss the VMT in the middle of some, of, of a document that we're just offering as a courtesy feels, it just doesn't feel right.
Hold on, hold on, everybody. I got a bunch of people in the queue. I'm not trying to be rude or cut anybody off. But Commissioner Fontanardi, Commissioner Raskin, and then Lan, Commissioner Lambert was how I saw the hands going.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, we've had this conversation in the past, a level of service versus vehicle miles traveled. And I think that in the public understanding of the EIRs and in the way we use EIRs, try to anticipate problems by using VMT. It's a giant camouflage, just a giant smug string. It's completely untestable. Did we actually save those vehicle miles traveled? Whereas when you do level of service, you can go back and check your level of service five, 10 years from now and understand whether you've got it right. So what I'm saying is that we should use both. Now, we cannot deny using level of service. But I want to know the level of service impact of these projects and that should come up in the EIR. They're supposed to tell us what the impacts are going to be, whether we can act on them or not. That's a different question, but we should know which intersection are, are going to fail first. And so we can channel mitigations, if any, to those intersections. I think it's valuable because what you're telling people, if you read this report, everything's fine. There's not a problem in the world with traffic. And then everyone wonders why there's, you know, gridlock on Lincoln Boulevard from 3 o'clock to 7 o'clock at night. And, and you know, it's like, what? Well, but no, the EIR say it's all fine. And that's the problem. We're, we're kind of pretending that things are fine without actually looking at them.
Well, I mean, that, that's not exactly, that's not 100% accurate. They have it, we have a different way of looking at things. We're not as car-focused as the, as the old methodology was. And the old methodology, what it would say is we need to widen streets so we can have more throughput, throughput, throughput. And then we end up with a worse built environment. So there's a whole school of law that started with SB 375 15 years ago that has headed us down this path. And in fact, I think what we're going to end up seeing is EIRs that only talk about VMT and they might do LOS as an informational tool. So you're going to see that, you're going to flip, the rules have changed. And, and the only reason that they have LOS in this, as I understand it, is because they started the NOP or they started this EIR before the city adopted VMT.
Yeah, but I have to respond to that, that, you know, pedestrians are affected by level of service too. Bicyclists are affected by level of service. Buda riders are affected by level of service. So all these things factor in to how an intersection functions. It's not just about cars or adding lanes. It's about the time you lose. Everybody loses that time.
No, I, I just agree, but we'll, we'll, we'll agree to disagree on this. And I'm going to turn to, I think Commissioner Raskin had the next set of comments and then Commissioner Lambert.
Yeah, just, just very quickly, I, I mean, per SB 743, the amendments to the Public Resources Code, we legally cannot find LOS to the significant impact. CEQA has been, has been amended so that we, we legally cannot find LOS to, uh, to cause a significant impact. Uh, there is substantial evidence in the record to show that, that VMT impacts are not significant here. Um, you know, I think we should leave it to Ms. Quok and her colleagues to find the best way to, uh, bend the text of the EIR accordingly. Perhaps through an Arata or whoever is best to do it. I don't think we necessarily have to go through legwork of that tonight. But, um, I, I just wanted to get his comments out there for the record.
Wait, can I ask a question?
No, it's my turn, Sean.
All right, all right. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, Jim. Um, I want, I want to get a couple of things clear. One is if we shift to VMT, we would not need a statement of override.
No, there's still, there's still one, it's, it's still a little suspect, which is on vibration. And they cannot, they cannot assume that's a mitigation because they cannot guarantee that the neighbor will agree to it. But the reality is, why wouldn't the neighbor agree to protecting their property?
I understand, but from the traffic standpoint, we're okay.
Right, so, so there's two, there's, there's two sets of unmitigated impacts out there. And both of them are somewhat unusual because they, they either the laws change and one doesn't apply anymore. Or one, it's in the best interest of that neighbor to agree to the law.
And then my second question is, um, there, there had to have been a reason why LOS was used in this EIR. I mean, it wasn't just a officious decision by staff. And, and if we don't, if we shift over to VMT, does that create a legal liability for the project? That's a city attorney question.
It's, I mean, again, it's the reason they used it is because that's what existed at the time the EIR.
Right, that's what started it and got us in this crack. Um, but again, I mean, I think the first position is that we are subject to the exemption, at least for CEQA purposes. And the, the EIR is a belt and suspenders approach. But, um, I think Rachel should weigh in on this particular question.
Yeah, so let me explain the timeline. So the NOP was done years ago. And then when the EIR was being drafted. And then when the EIR was being drafted, we very well knew VMT was coming. We just didn't know exactly when it was, um, what we were going to land on. So the, as I explained before, the ER was released in May. Subsequently, during that comment period time, we adopted the new thresholds in June. And after that, we had some time to create, to prepare the final ER in the EIR. The final ER actually has a full analysis of VMT on, starting on page three point thirteen, three, three point thirteen dash thirty eight provides the full analysis of VMT according to our adopted thresholds. And according to that analysis, it's less than significant. So staff is happy to put in both, um, discussions of impacts as necessary in the resolutions as we move forward to council, and we would, um, not object to that.
I, I just want to be sure that the timing of this does not put in jeopardy the legal situation of the project to move forward. And I always switch to VMT when it should have been LOS. So I don't think so.
Yeah, the, when the SEQA guidelines was adopted for SB seven forty three, it did state that, you know, um, the VMT thresholds would apply prospectively, meaning it would apply to projects moving forward. Hence why we decided to do both analysis to cover our, um, legal bases.
So you're saying we should do both? He did. No, I know you did.
We did do both.
We should leave, we should leave both in the EIR.
Correct.
And she says she's willing to beef up any conversation of that. And I would suggest that we even add it into, potentially into the statement of overriding consideration.
Okay.
Okay, hold on. I got Commissioner Fresco next.
Um, one thing that I think some people maybe have forgotten uh, is the reason that we switched to VMT from LOS in EIRs is because LOS is about traffic and quality of life and comfort and getting places and living. But VMT is actually about the environment and that's, it's how much you drive and how far you go. That is what really affects air quality and all the environmental stuff. So whether or not whichever, wherever an EIR falls in the line of which one has to be studied is not as important. I mean, what we're supposed to be thinking about is the environment. And if there are traffic impacts, that's a separate thing for the city to deal with and mitigate and study. But it's not really the realm of the EIR anymore, though I don't see a flaw in the EIR. And, uh, you know, it did do both. I read both things. It was very clear. It said, yes, this is, you know, the LOS thing, this is what we have to study. And then it went into a whole thing about VMT where Rachel said it was. And it said that if this was the way we looked at it in this EIR because of when this was started, we don't, if we did, it would not have an impact. So that's what we need to know. So if we want people to know both things, great, let's do it. But I don't think it's a debate. I think it's just all there.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. It's just a matter of, I think all we're asking is, does somebody use a highlighter pen and highlight that the VMT was done and it says there is no impact. Um, so Commissioner Landris.
Thank you. So I have a question for Commissioner Raskin, which I, that, that's, sorry, Leslie, I didn't mean to cut you off. But Ellis said something that I wanted, I want him to clarify because, because item NE one, okay, on page ES fifty one, it's like page fifty four of the EIR. So item NE one in the summary on page fifty four of the EIR, I just want to make sure everybody knows where I am. And then item T one, excuse me, T two A, page ES fifty nine, which is page sixty two of the PDF. Both of those find significant and unavoidable impacts for intersection LOS. Now, Commissioner Raskin stated that the law forbids us from finding, of finding a significant and unavoidable impact based on LOS. So I would like, maybe, I'd like to hear from Commissioner Raskin whether you can make these findings, given that they're apparently not legal. And then I'd like to hear from city attorney about whether we can make these findings if in fact the law says we can't make them. So I'd just like to know whether we need to literally amend those two findings to just say something like, they would be significant and unavoidable if we were still using LOS. Which would.
I had the same question. Let's let him answer.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Look, my, my understanding, and I'll, I'll defer to our city attorney's office with respect to actually giving legal advice to the commission. But my understanding personally is that, uh, SB seven forty three has amended the Public Resources Code and the sequel, well, and, and, you know, subsequently the two guidelines were amended following that, uh, such that, uh, uh, level of service cannot be used as a criterion for finding a significant environmental impact. Uh, that being said, I, I, I don't think we have to worry too much about how we're word spitting this because there's, there's substantial evidence in the final uh, environmental impact report that shows that, uh, VMT impacts are not significant, so.
I totally, I totally agree with that. I mean, you know, it, it really has no legal effect because it, as he said, the law says that it doesn't have uh, an environment, a significant environmental impact. So it's, it is in there for informational purposes. I see why it is confusing. But from a legal, uh, aspect, I don't think it, it derails or delegitimizes the, the, the SEQA document because it does have the VMT analysis. It does say that there's a less than significant impact. Um, however, I do think that if we need to clarify that, then we will clarify that. Um, and so, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. And hopefully this is going to be the last EIR we see with this type of a problem.
Absolutely.
Yep. Can always hope. Okay. So on the EIR, I think the two things that we want to do there is we want it, we want Rachel to take a look at how she can make it even more abundantly clear that the, that the, that there's no impact with traffic. And maybe that is adding language either within the bot, the text of the EIR or to the statement of overriding consideration. Is everybody okay with that direction? That's not specific verbiage that we're giving them, but that's specific, that direction.
Yes, and I would like them to take a look at the boxes in the summary to avoid, uh, misunderstandings because right now they, they just say significant and unavoidable with no, um, with, 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 with no qualification, which I think most people will not read the EIR fully, but they'll read the summary and the summary is, is problematic as written.
Well, key, okay, focus on key areas where people are reading it because I just think.
What I'm saying, that's what they're reading. So I think that's what they're going to read.
Okay, fine. Um, the second thing I want to add on the EIR is I, I would like for the recommendation to include the categorical exemption. This project is categorically exempt. Right now that, I don't think that's, um, part of any, any motion. But I think that needs to be part of our recommendation that it is both categorically exempt and we've done an EIR. Any objections to having that added in as a motion, into a motion or recommendation? See, nobody say no. I'm going to take that as unanimous. Those are all the comments I think we have on the EIR at this point. I'd like to turn my attention to the DA. Um, and the DA, I, I have these following issues I wrote down. It's not totally comprehensive, but this is what I'd like to start with is, is there, do we want to move the TIF fee to something that's focused on ocean and downtown, the downtown area? Uh, cultural, the square footage reduction around the lobby? Can we allow up to two, two hundred square feet of reduction without that applying to the overall five percent reduction to the building? Uh, vibration monitor in Palisades Park? The clean and safe language, um, should probably be, potentially be dropped out of the, uh, the fee for economic, uh, diversity. Other thing is kind of pushing some, pushing some sustainability issues, whether that's, what can you do on battery storage in the building? But I would like really focus it on what can you do to reduce water? Because to me in a hot, in a hotel, water is the biggest use, you know, uh, use that we have there, or it's one of the biggest impacts. So I would have a more general statement to have them look at, have the council between now and then, the council that the team and the council consider what they can do on battery, battery storage and water reduction. And then we can talk about the roof deck being free or not. Those are what I had for lists that I heard you, everybody talk about. Commissioner Lambert.
I'm, I'm fine with all of that. I just, I have a concern and I, and I totally understand where Commissioner Fresco is coming from with the lobby and it's sort of coming in. And then I'll. What?
Your mic is cutting in and out. I couldn't hear what you were saying.
I understand your intent about, you know, the square footage of the lobby. And I, and I, you know, you set the amendment up to two hundred square feet to be reduced. But I really would like to put some kind of caveat in there that it doesn't negatively affect the programming of the museum or the economic feasibility of the museum. I don't really know what the effect of this is going to be. Okay. Am I frozen? Are you guys frozen?
She's thinking about it. It didn't look like she was frozen for a second, but she was.
I was thinking really hard.
That should be okay, Nina. I mean, I can't imagine it's going to affect.
Okay, yeah, that's cool.
Okay. So the language was say as long as it doesn't affect the programming of the museum.
So, you know, also, do we have to, uh, I asked this earlier of staff, do we have to add the red lines that you showed us in the beginning or are they all, we need to add those too to our recognition? And full disclosure, those were all my notes. But I worked hard to get them written.
Figured that out on our own.
I know. Well, DAF just presented it. Just, I didn't expect her to do that. Um, it was great. Thank you. Uh, but yes, uh, and those are all agreed upon by all parties. Uh, and they have language that they would be okay if we think they're okay.
City Attorney.
So, uh, it looks like we do have some TIF fee language to recommend. And I'm wondering if we could either read that, uh, Roxanne or Heidi, do you want to read that into the, um, read that to them or share your screen with them?
Um. I can share my screen. This is a document that's a work in progress. I'm trying to catch up with the language changes that they're proposing. Just a moment.
Were there, while she's doing that, were there other items folks had that they wanted to add to the list of changes? And Commissioner Fonda, I know you had your hand up, so as soon as we get through this, call on you to speak.
Right. Is that visible?
Yes.
So again, work in progress. Number one is the language suggested for the proposed LUP amendment. Bearing in mind, this language doesn't actually change the number that's being proposed for the actual FAR, but this is contextual. So that is fine. Um, number two, I think this is what I'm understanding.
All three of those are consistent with what I hoped for.
And then three is just striking the language with the references to the clause and all. Although I kind of mushed that paragraph together, that two point eight point thirteen, but I, I understand that you want all references struck on that, so.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. And I looked at the Miramar DA and the languages that once you strike the clean, once you strike comma or clean and safe downtown initiatives comma, it's exactly the same language as was in the draft DA at Miramar, just with a different dollar amount.
Okay, what, um, okay, so I can stop sharing this for the moment. And go back.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanted to catch up on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxanne. I know that's not easy and that's a little bit of pressure doing that live on TV. Okay, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I think we should move the question as amended by the list you enumerated.
Yeah. My second.
We have a second, we have the second from Lambert that I was here.
What are we moving?
Aren't we supposed to be doing the LUP and then Miramar and then the DA?
Yeah, we first need to, we, we hadn't really got past the DA comments. I was going to open up the, the the LUP again, but we know what the LUP comments are going to be. So why don't we vote on the first one? Can I get a motion to recommend the council approve the amendment to the local coastal plan for consistency with the two thousand ten general plan and this two thousand seventeen downtown community plan standards, including the modifications we made tonight?
I so moved.
Just, just to clarify, pardon, pardon me, that's actually a resolution that you would be adopting as part of your recommendation. Not just a motion, it's a resolution that's before you.
So we're adopting the resolution.
Adopting the resolution, not recommending. My, my mistake.
Right, the resolution recommended.
My second lesson, to adopt the resolution. As amended, as re, as just amended, um, my question to include the well within clause.
Thank you, Sean.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien? Okay, so you.
Sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes. Now can we get a, can we, uh, adopt a resolution recommending the city council certify the environmental impact? Add in the CE, um, and to approve the development agreement based on the comments we've made tonight and the changes we've talked about here in the last four hours.
And the ones that Roxanne showed at the beginning of the.
Right, right.
Right.
Somebody else too.
Sure. But I really want to be really clear that we're moving it concomitant with the recommendation to do that cleanup on the VMT issue and on the, and on the, um, vibration mitigation issue, right? Like our, that's a pretty much a, I can't say contingent because then we're not really doing it, but it's concomitant with that recommendation for clarification.
My second.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
This is a point of clarification. Can we do the DA recommendation and the sequel stuff in the same motion?
It, well, that's the way it was presented to me in this, in my cheat sheet, so I'm going to say yes.
Then I'll add the DA as amended, uh, through discussion, including, but not limited to the amendments that were presented to the commission before the meeting and the amendments that were arrived at through discussion, including the LUP clarification, the economic impact clarification and the TIF funding clarification. But Chair, we hadn't gotten through the, um, well, I mean, I'm in favor of the dollar fee, but we hadn't had the discussion. So do you want to hold?
On what?
Well, do you want to do the EIR and then go back in fairness? To everybody?
Art, let's just put it this way. Yeah, I guess technically we should do that. Tell the thing that what he's bringing up, what he's bringing up is Mario's comment about not having the fee for the one dollar. We hadn't discussed that and I don't know what to report on that. So go ahead and do the, the environmental.
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you ready for a roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yeah.
Vice Chair Raskin?
I was just going to clarify that we, we are recommending SEQA exemption and certification of the EIR, correct?
And cleanup, and cleanup of the EIR language.
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes. Okay. So one of the things that we, that we had not talked about was the fee. That was something that got brought up by Commissioner. Is there support for it to be a zero, to be free? And I'm going to just start by saying it's one dollar. It seems cheap to me. And because it's going to the schools, it's basically free to the, the applicant is, for the applicant, it's free. It's actually going to cost them money. Not only has to operate it, but then he has to collect the money and get it to the school system somehow. It's actually gonna cost them money. Not only has to operate it, and then he has to collect the money and get it to the school system somehow.
Yeah, and all the money that we pay on our tax bills go to buildings, and this is actually an opportunity to fund things that happen in classrooms, which is a cool thing. So I think this is a needed source.
Is the, is the TIF amendment included in what we're doing?
It is, but, and we've already kind of approved that. I think the only thing that's left out is this, the roof deck, is the only thing we hadn't really talked about.
I just, I had a point about the TIF, Sean. The argument-
Oh, 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 hold on, hold on. Let me just, let's get through this issue, because I haven't, we haven't got this issue done. Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, I, I'm sympathetic to the idea that, you know, access should, should be free to people who, who want to have access, but, you know, to Chair Reese's point, I mean, this is money going to a good cause. I wonder if we could maybe phrase the, the, you know, language in some way to make it kind of like, you know, those museums that charge a donation instead of, you know, an access fee. You know, I think there's probably some sort of middle ground we can find here.
All of the donation to the school district for access to-
Yeah, I, I mean-
So, can I say two things?
Go ahead, please go ahead.
One is like, first of all, I, I get, I think, I like the idea, I like the idea of the funding going, you know, that, that funding stream. Obviously, you know, a lot of where, where SMF funding goes is toward the arts, so you can imagine, you know, concerts on the roof deck of, of, you know, middle and high school bands, kind of fun. But I am wondering, and I hate to ask the quiet part out loud, but I'm gonna ask it out loud, because I think it's what we're talking about. The charging of a fee converts this, makes it clear that the space is a private space. The charging of the fee maintains the, maintains full control over the rooftop site, and I'm wondering whether any, a change to that language creates an open access issue that, we had long conversations with the Miramar folks about when they were gonna close the property, the, over this issue of public access. So I'm just, I'm wondering, maybe staff can clarify for us, does this fee serve more than one purpose? And I, I think we need to know so that we can make an actually informed decision, because the money's nice, but if it changes the legal character of the rooftop deck, to have it or not have it, we should be informed of that.
Well, I, I guess I'm open to hear what staff has to say. I don't quite understand how it would change it, but what you've raised for me is, we don't have hours of operation, and maybe, and we should probably recommend that.
Are you sure? I thought that there were hours of operation.
We do have hours. We do, the, the observa, excuse me, the observation deck is proposed to be subject to public access regulations as publicly accessible open space. We do have a section in 2.8 that addresses the deck.
Jim, I have a question.
So there are, okay, there are hours of operation. I apologize.
I, I totally don't understand your point, Sean. I mean, parks charge entrance fees. Those are public spaces. I don't really get what you're saying. I mean, yes, it's privately owned, it's open to the public, it's a public space, so they pay a buck to go. Why don't we just charge for the elevator? Somebody wants to take the stairs to the roof, they could do that for free.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't get the public-private thing, because lots of public spaces charge fees too.
Well, are there four people who want this to be totally free? Let's just get, cut to the chase. I see one, I see two, I'm, I see two and a half. I'm sorry, I need to get to four, and I'm not getting there. So let's move on, folks.
Wait, can I ask if there are four people who want it to be donationware? By the way, it's adjustable dollars, so it's only gonna be a dollar for the next five minutes, because it indexes as of July 1st, 2023, so it's gonna be like a $1.15 next July. So, let's just be honest about that. I'm, I would like, I, I think, and I'm an advocate for this, I think we should charge a donation. I, I think that, yeah, it says, charge the public up to a buck per person. I'm also saying this because if we're calling this publicly accessible public space, and we're treating it according to the publicly accessible open space rule, this may be the first publicly accessible open space for which we charge a fee, and I'm not, I, I don't love the precedent on that. I-
So all you're, all you're saying is change, change the language so that it says it's a don- You're giving a donation to enter, and the donation goes to the school? That's what you're just having us wordsmith it?
Sam, this guy has hand up for the past 10 minutes.
The question, who collects this damn fee? Who's collecting? Somebody standing at the elevator?
The doorman.
Yeah. We're spending a lot of time on something that really is not that-
Right.
Well, I would, I would amend my proposal to consider it a donation. I think that's the middle ground, that we can move on. And, you know, those who have can pay, and those who would rather enjoy the view for free, which I think is the best way to go, they can do that.
Okay, I agree.
So the language, I would change the word charge to, charge the public to be, request a donation from the public of up to $1.00 per person, adjusted for-
Why does it have to be up to? Why can't it be like?
Could be $20.
Yeah, you can say suggested donation $5, but you can go for anything. I used to go to the Metropolitan Museum, I would give them a quarter.
That's great. May request a donation from the public for access to, so long as 100% of the net income is donated to SMF.
Right, right.
There you go.
Can we move on?
That's terrific.
We gotta say voluntary donation.
Can you pause just a moment?
Sort of by definition, it's volunteer.
All right, Nina, please, Sean, can you please just, honestly, if you're, I would need to carry that language over into the document, which I'm doing at the moment, so if you could just, if there are votes for this, and this is what you'd like to do, is edit this, then I just need a moment and slow down just slightly.
Because I would be more comfortable with a minimum donation of $1.00, because I like, I like the money going, some money going to the schools.
I do too.
Give $5.
Yep, but-
Maybe a family of four will get $5.
Make it as easy as possible for people to get up there.
Yeah.
But also make it easy for them to give more money.
All right, so I will show this to you after I am done. Could you please, so you were saying?
Well, stop talking.
No, no, I just, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm editing this now. So developer may charge the public up to $1.00, and so you want to, you want to change that, correct?
Developer may request a donation of up to $1.00.
No, just request a donation.
Okay.
This is like a-
No, any amount. Let's let the developer decide how much to request, since it's a-
I feel like McDonald's on the roof.
Oh. See, Commissioner Tolkien, you gotta be careful what you wish for in life.
Could also say that it's free, but nothing prevents the developer from requesting voluntary donations, something like that.
Susan, if that's what you like, then we should go with what you can do.
I'm just trying to characterize what you guys are trying to get to.
The developer may-
I, I prefer the idea that there's a suggested donation of a dollar, so that-
Yes.
Compels people but doesn't require-
Why?
Because you want to raise money for a cause.
But maybe somebody wants to put $20 in.
Right.
Jesus.
I think it would help staff if you guys just vote one, one thing at a time, and then like-
Welcome, Sam. Are you having fun?
Yes.
Okay. Let's get, let's, let's talk, let's do what the city attorney's asked us to do. We have language on the TIF. Can we vote on the TIF language?
Which one is that now?
The TIF language was, that we shot, we saw it five minutes, five minutes ago on the screen, and it's something about funding, funding the-
I read it out loud. It's, "In the absence of an alternative source of funding, up to 25% of the enhanced transportation impact fee shall be prioritized for the study and/or improvement of multimodal mobility on Ocean Avenue and circulation in the downtown area." This is language that we would be recommending. It does not obligate the study to happen. It simply says, because this is not a study that's likely to get prioritized for state funding. So it basically says, look, if we can't get anybody else to pay for it, then up to a quarter of what's coming in can be prioritized for this. Doesn't even say used, it says prioritize.
You don't qualify for state funding, Sean, so that's all rhetorical.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's vote on this. Voice vote that we need to take?
Are we good?
Well, I'm trying to get staff to tell me whether they want a voice, voice vote or not. I don't know that thumbs up, and I only saw two thumbs up.
This is straw vote.
Roll call. Are you ready?
Yes.
Did we have a first and a second, Chair?
It says straw vote.
Okay.
Just give her a first. Let's just, come on, you guys, let's get this done.
There you go, I'll move it.
Let's go.
And you're seconding it, Leslie, right?
Right.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
This is just the TIF now, right?
Just, yeah.
Okay, yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes. Okay, the next is that you're able to modify the lobby square footage of the cultural center by up to 200 square feet, as long as it doesn't impact the integrity of the-
Program, programming of the museum.
Programming of the museum.
Well, you can modify, that's not it at all.
What? And you said it's okay?
Well, he's lost the thing. The idea is to reduce the size of the cultural lobby by up to 200 square feet, that's fine. Which shall not count against design review constraints and reduction of floor area for the cultural-
As long as it doesn't negatively affect the programming of it.
And if it doesn't affect programming of feasibility.
Don't move.
Second. I second it. Let's call the question.
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tolkien?
Yes.
Oh, pardon me. Sorry, you got a- Sorry about that. Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes.
Nina, can you please repeat that?
A reduction of the size of the cultural use lobby up to 200 square feet shall not count against design review constraints on reduction of floor area for the cultural use component, so long as it doesn't impact feasibility and, what was the other word?
Program, doesn't negatively, yeah, program.
I apologize. On so little sleep, I cannot type that fast. Would, Nina, would you be willing to drop that into an email for me or?
I will, just a second. I'll just finish. It's not all in here. I'm sorry you're so tired.
I'm, I'm just, I'm not even complaining. I'm just saying literally I cannot type as fast as I normally would be able to scribe. I'm finding that out as, as this video goes on. I apologize for belaboring this topic.
Roxanne, I'm not sure you're the one belaboring anything.
The size of the cultural uses campus lobby by up to 200 square feet shall not count against-
Okay. Please. You never find a new message here, sorry. I sensed it was out of subject, so probably go to your junk.
While she's waiting on that, just use some time here. We all saw the language a little while ago about striking the clean and safe language from that, from the one DA provision. Can I get, can I move, get a first and a second?
Don't move.
Exactly.
Landris, Landris and Fondo Bernardi on that.
This is for the updates to the language, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Breaking clean and safe.
Correct. Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Commission, and Chair Reese?
Yes. Roxanne, if you're still working, I'll go to the next one until you interrupt me, and feel free to interrupt me. The next was pushing them a little more on sustainability, and we didn't give a lot of great language on this, but what I was looking for was, was that they minimize their water usage by looking at alternatives to water, any, any alternatives. I mean, one I would throw out there is the, the cooling tower, but, so that's one part of the sustainability push. The other is push battery storage. And I think our recommendation to council is to consider imposing some new requests on that, and that gives the applicant some time between now and council to see what they can do on that issue. Commissioner Landris?
I, I support that. I want to observe that some of what, because in terms of using recycled water and things like that, some of what we're talking about with respect to water is not exclusively under the city's control. So I would like to see if we're talking about finding ways to work together. I think it would be helpful, for example, to the extent that the county, for, for instance, is regulating use of recycled water, I think it would be helpful to find language, and I don't think we're gonna write it tonight, that puts the city and the applicant on the same team, working together to encourage the county to update its rules, and similarly to encourage the state or whatever, because I know this from some of the other conversations about purple pipes. It's, it's not entirely under the city's control. So that's not to say that we shouldn't be aggressive, we should be, but it's to recognize that not everything is, is within our purview entirely.
Yeah, no, I, I, I appreciate that, and I totally, I completely understand that we cannot control the county on that. What my, my attack point is, have a building that used less water all around, and then you'll have, then you, you would use less, you would have to worry about less purple pipe water.
May I comment that the DA already takes this into account, because there is the water neutrality requirement, but secondly, there is the new recycled water ordinance which just went into effect. It does take into account that they have to use recycled water for all non-potable uses, and it does contemplate that it is subject to the county requirements, and that there is some, some review of this process, because it's the water manager that has to basically look at the project and decide that they have used the recycled water to the extent that they possibly can, so there is some technical analysis. So it would be difficult to do anything more than that, because the ordinance, the recycled water ordinance already takes that into account, unless you want to be very specific about certain water-saving features, which none of us are prepared to talk about tonight. But, you know, the recycled cooling tower, I, I do believe the developer committed to, to using the recycled water. That's a big water user. And so some of that has already been contemplated in the DA.
Yeah, I guess, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think I'm making myself clear, because I'm not saying, and you guys are, you guys are reading this as I want you to maximize all the recycled water in the building. I want to use as little water, period, and I want the most efficient fixtures and, and equipment, is what I'm trying to strive for here. So to reduce all water usage, whether it's- So to reduce all water usage, whether it's potable or recycled is where I'm, I was heading. And my understanding from back in my days on the Sustainable City Task Force, one of the biggest water users we have in the city are hotels. Though, and maybe they can't, maybe they've looked at it and they're as efficient as possible, but I don't know that they have spent a lot of time looking at efficiency.
I have a comment on that.
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi, please.
I think you're going in the absolute right direction and I think just the way you've stated it, the goal is to reduce the consumption of water. And I'll give you an example. You have water table down at 65 feet. You could run a line with some refrigerant in it down to that water and cool that water. You wouldn't have to extract so much and shoot it in the atmosphere in your water tower. So there's other tricks that can be applied. We should not dictate the tricks. We should set the objective, which is to reduce the absolute quantity of water use. That's all we're interested in. And the way you phrase it, I think is just right. It gives them discretion. If they run into a wall, if twist and turn, they can do it fine. But we want to know that they tried, that they really went farther than they should or could today.
Thank you. I think you definitely heard my, my thoughts. Commissioner Landris?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to see, and this goes back to what I was asking about as well in terms of the, you know, use of electricity. And I think this applies with water. It applies with, with, um, you know, electrical versus, electric versus gas. Um, I'm going through the, I'm going through the DA to look at the vested rights. And I, I think it would be helpful, and again, we can't write this tonight and I'm, I'm comfortable rec, we sort of recommending it conceptually. Um, you know, up until that moment, that very moment where they pull permits, I'd like this project to be held to the highest standards, right? If we tomorrow, if tomorrow the city council calls an emergency meeting to reduce water use structurally, they need to be held to this, you know, if, even though the DA has approved, right? Uh, if they haven't actually started actual, actual construction. And I'm not sure how we frame that. Um.
There's already a specific exemption exactly for that. It's in the supplement code, so code section of the DA where it specifically talks about, um, that they, they cannot, they must comply with emergency water, uh, emergency declarations on water use. See if I can find that one.
Right. I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying, well, no, I, I'm saying more like what's in 5.2.2 right below it, which essentially, you know, if, if, if the city, because the, the city already started talking about transitioning new build to electrical, to electric, uh, electricity only, no gas, right? So if by the end of this year or next year, the city says new build has to be all electric, uh, then this project has to be all electric, even if the DA is approved tomorrow. That's what I'm getting at. Whether it's battery storage, water, you know, anything that is, is sustainability oriented, we want to make sure that they're adapting while we're adapting and that we don't end up putting the energy equivalent of LOS into the building.
Yeah, I mean, Sean, I, you know, it's hard to disagree with you. We definitely want to hit on every, we want to hit on every, every part, but I, I get back to that Christmas tree.
Yeah, I know.
There are so many ornaments now. At what point are we going to tip it over? We got to figure out which one's the most important. And I'm going to pick up water in this, in this particular case, just because of the hotel element. And I, I would love it if it was all electric.
Right, no, but they agreed to that, right? They said they, they understand that if state law change, if the CBC changes, right? Before they build, they're going to have to follow the CBC. So they're going to have to follow the CBC for the year they build. They're going to have to follow, it's, it's in here, 5.2.2. So how do we, how do we communicate to council that we want to be as aggressive as possible on water and energy? Within the DA or alongside our transmittal, which is, I think, I'm, I'm thinking, Jim, that you need to go to council the night they take this up and make this point as well.
Okay, well, let me, uh, let's get through this hearing and make sure I understands everybody's point and I'll do my work. Um, well, maybe is the argument is what we're saying to them is that we want, we got to come up with language. We got to do it quick here because we've been, we've been rolling around this one for 15 minutes, 10 minutes. So maybe what it is, we recommend to, to the council or the staff between now and, and now in the council meeting that they find language where the, they have to prove to us that they have tried to make the building as, as energy and water efficient as possible before we start worrying about bringing on purple pipe issues or, and then they just prove that they're doing as energy, as much energy efficiency as possible with their electricity. And maybe that's just getting an electric, you know, getting a lead, lead consultant or an energy consultant who does, who does the, the workup and says this is a possibility. Not a perfect solution. Not a perfect language. Let me put it that way.
Well, we, I don't think the idea is to take care of reducing one thing before the purple pipe. I think the purple pipe has to also be part of the equation. I mean.
It's a big part of the equation, I think. I mean, we want to use as much purple pipe as possible, but if we only, you know, we want to use overall less water. The more we can push into the purple pipe with them, that's great.
Right. Right.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I mean, I think the problem here is in the past, when we've done that, there's been sort of an objective standard, right? 15% below green building standards or, you know, some percentage below whatever the code is. And so if you, otherwise it's very difficult to capture what you're saying in a contract. It has to be sufficiently definite to be enforced. So, um.
Okay, why don't we, that's a very, a very good point. Why don't we, what we say is we, we're recommending that some, some metric be established. We're going to recommend to the council that there's some metric be established that their water usage is X percent lower than. I don't know what the standard is, but.
Isn't that already in the DA? Is.
Some metric be established. We're going to recommend to the council that there's some metric be established that their water usage is X percent lower than. I don't know what the standard is, but.
Isn't that already in the DA?
System works for them. All we should say to them is what we want is the most water efficient building possible. And we need to see something that, some percentage reduction on what's the stand, the, the norm or the standard. And maybe it's not possible, but we need to push them on it.
That sounds good.
And then if you guys think I'm pushing too far and Ford, if you think that, let's tell me that and let's move on.
No, we're not pushing far enough, but let's keep going with this direction. This is productive.
Well. It's.
I'm not saying kill the project.
Yeah, we don't want to kill the project.
It's not, believe me, the absence of water will kill the project and a lot of other things, but saving water will not kill a project.
Okay. How about, I'll move this motion that, that between now and the, the council meeting, that the applicant should come up with a recommendation on some, on cutting edge water efficiency that is, um, worth them. Water efficiency that is practical, practical water efficiency. They can come back and they have to show us something. It might be minor, but at least it's some movement of where we're at today.
They're moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. I know that wasn't a very clean discussion, but it's an important one. Can we have a roll call vote?
Chair, may I restate?
Yes, you may.
Did you say applicant shall come up with a recommended practical water efficiency or water efficiency plan, sir?
Yes.
Very good. Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes. The next, I think we have the language that, that we saw early in the meeting, at the very beginning of the meeting, that was, um, that came from Nina. And if we need to put that back on the screen really quick, we could, but let's make a, if we need to, let's put it on the screen. If not, can I have a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
Seconded by Nina. Um, roll call, please.
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes. I think those are all the amendments that we talked about, folks. So this would be a good time to tell me I'm wrong on that because I would like to move next to the development agreement recommendation.
They're moved.
And I have a second on the development agreement.
Second.
I have moved by Landris, second by Raskin. And I have a roll call.
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes.
I apologize. Did this commission vote on the, on the deck? Um, Heidi and I are in a document here. Did we show that to you? Did you take a vote on the observation deck?
Did we?
Yeah, we did. We said donations only. I don't think you took a vote on it.
Didn't take a vote. You're right.
All right. Can you, can you read the language one more time and then I need a first or I'll need a motion?
Can we see it?
Yes.
It shouldn't be up to one dollar. What if somebody wants to do five dollars?
It's a volunteer donation from the public for access. Yeah, for access. That's all deleted.
Yeah, that's all we need.
Yeah. Great.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All right, okay, moved in a second.
Uh, who, who got the second? Who won?
I'm going to give that one to Les, to Leslie.
Oh, thank you. That was my issue.
Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes.
Do you need the DA again as a motion now that we've unraveled and rerevolved it?
Can we have a motion on the DA with this last change?
Once more with feelings. So moved.
Remember you were excited a little while ago. Let's see that excitement. Can I have a second?
Okay, second. Ellis, Ellis.
Commissioner, Commissioner Fondo Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Landris?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
And Chair Reese?
Yes.
We're punching, you guys.
That was a little chaotic, I'm glad you're doing it twice.
I think we're done with this issue. So we'll thank the applicant team for their presentation, the community for their time on this. And we'll move on to agenda item seven, which is we have nothing under resolutions. Next, we have written communications. Uh, I don't believe we had any written communications. Planning discussion items for member discussion items. Hoping not to see those. Okay, I don't see any. Moving to public input on items that are not part of the agenda. What we will do for the public is open a one minute timer. The, the number will be shared on the screen in a moment and should be at the top of the, of the agenda for this item. So Wendy, if you could put up the number and start our one minute countdown.
Sorry, my timer's being a little difficult.
Okay, that's our one minute. Wendy, did we get any callers?
That's when one minute, Chair.
Thank you. Did we, did we pick up a caller or two?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, good work tonight. We got a little muddled there at the end, but for the, for the most part, very efficient. And I hope you all have a good night. I'd like to adjourn, adjourn the meeting.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Roxanne.